This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the City of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRF Neil 101.9.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Beaton.
Here.
Bergy.
Here.
Kristofferson.
Here.
Emmanuel.
Here.
Gregert.
Here.
Klinkhammer.
Here.
Lor.
Here.
Yeah.
Weld.
Here.
Wirthman.
Here.
Jeong.
Here.
And good evening. Welcome to our Monday public hearing and discussion for July 27th. And I want to extend a sincere thanks to all of you for joining us remotely for this meeting, both council members and members of the community and staff. Again, for those of you that would like to address the City Council this evening, you must join the meeting as an attendee on a computer, tablet, or smartphone, which requires a WebEx app, using the link provided on the city website. The Eau Claire City Council conducts public hearings, listening sessions, and public discussion where residents in our community are invited and encouraged to ask questions and weigh in on the important decisions we will be making later this evening in our legislative session, later on, I'm sorry, later tomorrow in our legislative session or in the coming weeks and months ahead. We want to thank Valley Media Works for live streaming this proceeding. To watch, please visit ValleyMediaWorks.org or visit Channel 994 on Spectrum Cable. There's also simulcast at 101.9 FM. And you can find past meetings on YouTube under the Triple Valley Media Works channel. If you plan to address the council this evening, I will briefly review the protocol. Once an agenda item is introduced, staff will present on that item and following that presentation, the council may have questions to clarify an issue. We then will open the item for public input. Once the item is open for comment, please raise your hand on the WebEx screen and I will call you on you in the order in which the requests to speak are received. When it's your turn to comment, I will unmute you and ask you to please state your name and your address and then begin sharing your comments. We welcome you to speak for five minutes. I will then notify you when there's only one minute left. When you've reached five minutes, I will then ask you to bring your statement to a close. I will then ask you to lower your hand and you will then be muted and we, but are welcome to stay online to listen to the rest of the meeting or share a comment on another agenda item or during our public commentary period. There are times when council members will ask you follow-up questions, so please give us a moment before disconnecting. Again, if you wish to speak on an item that is not listed on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. Lastly, if you're not comfortable speaking in public, you can fill out a comment form on the city website and those comments will be shared with council members ahead of our legislative meeting tomorrow. As always, you can email or call council members outside of this meeting and our contact information is also on the city website. With that introduction, we'll get on to our first order, our first agenda item, which is a public hearing on an ordinance, rezoning property located at 1,000 West Clermont Avenue from C-2H to C-3P and to adopt the general development plan with a site plan for a commercial building. Good evening, Mr. Allen.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President Weld and members of the council. The given for you this evening is a request to rezone property at 1,000 West Clermont Avenue from C-2H to C-3P, which includes adoption of the general development plan for a commercial building being proposed. Here's the general location for the rezoning request. It's about 1.2 acres in size. It is currently a vacant Hardee's Restaurant, which closed last December. Go to the next slide, please. Thank you. This shows the area of the notifications that went out for tonight's hearing. Go to the next slide. This is a drawing that's rotated 90 degrees with north to the right. The request is coming before you from the applicant, Everyday Surveying and Engineering, on behalf of the owner, PDM Construction. And again, they're requesting to rezone this property with their general development plan for a commercial building. Preliminary site plan is before you here, just a concept plan at this point, is shown for a tunnel-style car wash. Again, the applicant is proposing to demolish the current vacant Hardee's Restaurant and replace it with a new commercial building, as you see here in concept form. Under the C-2 zoning, which is the current zoning, the applicant's proposed redevelopment of the site for a car wash would require a conditional use permit. And instead of going through that process, the applicant would like to rezone the property to the C-3P designation, which would allow the use of the car wash as a permitted use under the zoning code. This area in general has seen a fair amount of new development in the past several years with the Coffee and Bagels Shop, Marshfield Medical Center, Jimmy John's, Holiday Inn Express, and has also seen an increase in vacancy with ShopCo, the Nelson's IGA, and now this location of Hardee's. So the rezoning is in compliance with the comprehensive plan with the properties in the neighboring area as well, showing this all as commercial. A final site plan will need to be reviewed by the Plan Commission at a later date. The Plan Commission has recommended approval of the rezoning with the general development plan before you this evening. I'll stand for any questions.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Allen? I also see that Mr. Erickson is on, online as well if we have questions for him. I do not see any questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Again, this item is up for discussion. If there's anyone that wishes to speak to this agenda item, again, please wave your hand. And I am not seeing anyone. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Two, which is a public hearing on a, I'm sorry, Agenda Item Number 1.5, Public Hearing on a Resolution Approving a Site Plan in P Public District to Allow for Belating Improvements and Other Site Improvements to the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire Simpson Field. Again, good afternoon, Mr. Allen.
All right. Thank you again, Council President Weld and members of the council. Before you this evening is a request to approve a lighting plan for the UWUC Simpson Field along with additional improvements. Thank you. Here's the area in question with the notification area. Here's aerial photo showing the field more specifically and relates to the context of the rest of the campus and neighboring residential. Thank you. Here's the overall schematic of the, of the field. If we can skip ahead maybe a few slides. One more perhaps? Thank you. This shows kind of a, say a heat map, but just a proposed kind of lighting intensity area around the, the field with the proposed lighting. So we'll kind of park here just for visual. The UWUC has requested approval of lighting plan for this property. The city's outdoor lighting regulations provide exceptions to football, baseball, and other field lighting subject to Plan Commission approval, and this stuff should be taken to minimize glare and light trespass and utilize sensible curfews. You may have noticed as well that this is kind of a, a last-minute addition to the council agenda, in part because, as noted, typically is a Plan Commission review, but because of the, the P public zoning in this case, it is coming forward through, for city council approval as well. So the lighting plan provided by the applicant shows the field lights include four poles spaced around the track, 76 fixtures in total placed at 90 feet. There again show the glare impact calculations do not extend into the Old Court neighborhood to the east and only minimally onto Clermont Avenue to the south. Meeting with the neighborhood was held at the end of June to present the lighting plan. The narrative that was in your packet does note the lighting system is similar to that being used currently at Bollinger Field, which is the shared facility between the campus and the city to the south of here. In addition, if we can skip ahead, one more, thank you. The applicant is requesting a new monument sign along Clermont Avenue north of existing trail. The proposed monument sign is approximately 20 feet from the property line north of trail, about nine and a half feet tall, approximately 45 square feet. And the existing sign along University Avenue should be removed because it's on the same parcel as this new proposed sign. So this is part of the overall field and area improvements before you this evening. So with that, again, the applicant has provided quite a bit of detail for these improvements and I believe one of their representatives is available either to give a presentation or respond to questions. And with that, Plan Commission again has recommended approval of this item as well.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Are there any questions from council in regards to Agenda Item Number 1.5? Councilmember Gregert.
Thank you, President Weld and Mr. Allen. A question that I raised at Plan Commission was regarding the state natural area to the north, Putnam Park, and the image that was shown previously of the lighting intensity, I guess I was, I think Mr. Rassie from the university said he was going to look in to see if there was some sort of consideration that needed to be made with regard to state natural areas and, and lighting such as this, even though it's only for short periods of time. I just thought I'd see if there was an answer to that question.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Gregert, I may defer, as noted, to the applicant who I believe is present as well.
Mr. Ratsi, are you there, Jake?
Yes, thank you, President Weld, and I'd be happy to address and follow up on that question, Councilmember Gregert. First, members of the council, we appreciate the Plan Commission's approval and happy to answer any questions you may have. We worked through our different DNR guidelines and requirements for the state natural area and found that the provisions are entirely focused on what is within the boundary of the state natural area. So facilities such as the Simpson Field upgrade we're looking at now or the Davies Center parking lot, Phillips Hall parking lot that would be on the north side of the Putnam Park state natural area, do not change substantially the internal prospects of the park. So there is not any restriction or process that we would need to work through as it's not directly changing the state natural area. With that said, we do find that the tree cover and the hours of operation will not significantly disrupt that area. As you can recall, just north of the Simpson Field and Track area is a pretty steep drop-off. So the light may extend somewhat over the rim of the Putnam Park area, but will not have a major impact on, we believe, wildlife or biology in that area. So we appreciated that question and I am happy to answer any others that folks may have.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? I do not see any other questions. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ratsi for your, for your input. Again, this is a public discussion and if there's anyone that wishes to speak to this agenda item, please wave your hand. Again, if there's anyone that wishes to speak to this agenda item. Seeing none, we will close that item and move on to Agenda Item Number Two, which is a public hearing on an ordinance, rezoning property located on the west side of Babcock Street between West Madison Street and Cameron Street from R4 to CBDP and to adopt the general development plan with site plan for the L.A. Phillips Senior Center. Again, good evening, Mr. Allen.
All right. Thank you again, Council President Weld and members of the council. Again, before you this evening, it's actually a, quite an extensive list of requests related to the expansion project being proposed for the L.A. Phillips Senior Center located at 1616 Vellager Street. The first of which is to, a request to rezone property from R4 to CBDP, along with that to adopt general development plan with a site plan. Along with that as well, you'll be hearing about requests to approve a street vacation for Babcock Street from West Madison Street to Cameron Street, as well as to recommend declaration of excess land, the sale of vacant land, and to recommend approval of a certified survey map to combine all the parcels into one lot. You can see there, there are several parcels on the west side of the current Babcock Street to the west of the project, of the, excuse me, this L.A. Phillips Senior Center itself. So the rezoning is related to the properties to the west of the Senior Center. Skip to the next image, please. Thank you. This shows kind of the, in the heavy dashed line, the outline of the kind of extent of the project as it's being proposed. The expansion, as you see to the bottom right of the screen, kind of the center there, would be a 7,000 square foot single-story addition with basement, expanding westward from the existing L.A. Phillips Senior Center. Site plan will reconfigure existing parking, add new parking, vacate Babcock Street right-of-way from West Madison Street to Cameron Street, move the existing bicycle rack to be nearer the entrance, close the West Madison Street access at Babcock Street, and move all vehicle access to the north to Cameron Street. Site plan also provides for additional sidewalks, crosswalks, site lighting, landscaping, and redirected stormwater that includes proposed bio-retention basin. If we can skip ahead, please. You can see there to the bottom left, the area for the bio-retention basin and the expanded parking area. Go ahead again. More clearly identified there. Go ahead one more. Thank you. And this is a little more of the kind of color rendering of the landscape area being proposed and some of the kind of, kind of ground improvements just outside the proposed building addition there. It's kind of to the center to the top of the screen. Go ahead one more slide. Thank you. These are the site elevations, kind of building elevations for that expansion. I believe that may be the last of our slides. Yes, thank you. Go back to, just land on the color image here for discussion purposes. The design of the building expansion will coordinate with existing building, including materials, colors, and textures. Dumpster area will be relocated to the west and include screening with a privacy fence. The dumpster area is essentially kind of the center. Right now, along Madison Street, it would move to the west. Can I see the notch there between the two pale green segments to the left? It'd be in that general area. Screen wall also be located on the south side of the addition. You can see there with some of the plantings being proposed in that area. And also to screen the cooling unit from West Madison Street. So there, again, proposal to make some improvements along the kind of frontage that faces Madison Street, along with some improvements to the pedestrian access as well. Transit, did want to make a note in your information, the stop at Madison Street will be at least temporarily affected by the project and with the demolition and kind of reconstruction of that area. And Transit Division has requested that the stop have a concrete pad poured at or near its current location, may be then considered for future kind of bus shelter provisions as well. Additional comment that was recommended for the site plan portion of the proposal by the Plan Commission last week was that crosswalk, it's hard to see there, kind of to the center left, there's a little white X, and it would, kind of, there's a dark line that extends upward from that. In that area, it's not clearly identified there. Thank you. That's a great help. Yeah, to the middle, there's a white X. So there's a recommendation to add a condition for the site plan that a crosswalk with curb cuts should be installed across the entrance of that southern loading area. That's a loading area you see there. There's some additional parking to the north that's being proposed along the west building facade of the expansion. You can also see the pedestrian connection there too. So the idea there is to provide a more delineated connection from the public sidewalk along Madison there where that white X is, to the sidewalk of the west side of the building expansion. So just a, a small detail, but important detail to make that connection from the public sidewalk up into the new building. The main entrance for L.A. Phillips Senior Center will remain essentially unchanged in its current location for the most part on the north side of the building. So all kind of pedestrian traffic will be kind of directed and guided up that way. So with that, can certainly discuss more details as needed. Next item on your agenda is a discussion on the vacation of Babcock Street, but this is more looking at the rezoning for that property primarily to the west of Babcock Street and then again, the plan, general development plan related to that. So with that, I will stand for any questions.
Any questions from council, from Mr. Allen? Councilmember Bergy.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Allen, for that presentation. I, my question more has to do with the next item about vacating Babcock, but just the bigger question, I guess, which relates to this item as well is, has there been discussion with the school district and in particular with the Montessori Elementary School that's right there? Because as everyone, well, parents, that gets to be very busy, pick up and drop off. And I know streets are coveted over there for parents to go through and, yeah, I just wonder what conversations that the school district has looked like.
We can actually go back a few, sorry. Great question, Councilmember Bergy. I may defer that. That's fine right there. Thank you. Yep, that's a good image. I may defer that to the applicant and for that next item as well, more specific to that access. I do know, again, there is a requirement related to obtaining kind of sign-offs, signatures for that petition to vacate, and so that is what's before you as well here tonight with the next agenda item. So I may defer to the applicant or to the next agenda item if that's okay, Mr. President.
I can ask, Ms. Anderson, are you there?
Hello?
Good evening.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
To speak to the question in regards to the school, we have worked with the school and have gotten their approval. They've also not just worked with their own situation, but with also the school buses. So meeting with the school bus organization and themselves, the new principal and the school board, they did approve, and you'll see that on the street vacate request, they did approve the, the request, if that's helpful.
Yes, thank you.
Mm-hmm. You bet.
Are there any other questions? Councilmember Gregert.
Yeah, thank you, President Weld. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Guess I, you know, I asked about the bike rack at the Plan Commission meeting and via email, but I guess I was kind of wondering if it's, if the new location for the bike rack will still be underneath the, the shelter of the, of the entrance? Yeah, because I guess it seems like, from my perspective, it's in a good spot right now because it's underneath the shelter of the entrance and is not in the way of like the sidewalk to, to enter the building. So I'm just kind of looking for a little bit more information about the, the proposed location for the bike rack and why, why it's really being proposed to me moved in the first place.
Great question, no, it's a great question, Councilmember Gregert. I may defer that to the, to the applicant as well.
Ms. Anderson?
Actually, I thought that the bike rack was staying where it is, Jeremy. I was, I thought we were getting an additional bike rack. So that I need clarification from the architect.
And if I may add, that, that may be the understanding that staff has as well. So I apologize for any confusion with that. I believe the existing bike rack, as the applicant noted, would stay and would be an additional bike rack. They, it was noted in the, the contractor's notes that they were going to move it, but we can certainly get clarification as to whether that's a relocation or if it's an additional bike rack.
Okay. Thank you.
Is Mr. Lundberg on the, as part of this?
Not sure.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Allen or for Ms. Speaker Anderson? I don't see any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public discussion. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Please raise your hand. Mr. Lundberg? Mr. Lundberg? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Not seeing any? We will move on to Agenda Item Number Three, which is a public discussion on a resolution vacating a portion of Babcock Street from Madison Street to Cameron Street. Ms. Ness, are you there?
I am. Good evening.
Good evening.
The owner, L.A. Phillips Senior Center initiated the request to vacate the public right-of-way in conjunction with the projects that Mr. Allen just presented before the council tonight. And the packet that has been received contains the petition and the needed signatures by the owners of the frontage areas as required in our ordinance. There is existing water main, sanitary and storm sewer located within the right-of-way at this time, and there may be some private utilities as well that occupy the area. The standard resolution language for the vacation of the right-of-way retains utility easements. So staff does not plan to bring forward a companion resolution to eliminate the utility easements so we can maintain operations to our existing utilities, the water main, sanitary and storm sewer through this area. We anticipate that there will be no impacts to the current or future utility or transportation needs. In fact, by the proposed plan and the vacation of this right-of-way, we will be eliminating an access point to Madison Street, which will reduce the number of collision points on Madison Street and potentially reduce the number of accidents at that intersection. We do believe that the vacation would appear to be in the best interest of all parties and at the previous Plan Commission, they did review the right-of-way vacation and recommended approval. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Ness. Are there any questions for either Ms. Ness or for Ms. Anderson in regards to Are there any questions for either Ms. Ness or for Ms. Anderson in regards to this agenda item? Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you for pointing out the, in the packet, that the school district signed up on it. I don't, I looked at the packet and I must have missed that. I looked at it through like three times, looking for the school district, and couldn't find it, so, but now I see it. But I do have another question, and I'm glad that you are working, the applicant's working with the school district and the principal, the new principal, over at the elementary school. And I'm wondering when the construction will take place. Will it be during the school year? I'll defer that.
Ms. Anderson?
Okay. Just FYI, the architect is also in on this meeting, and he is unable to raise his hand to chat. That would be David Kimball. So if you see him in, his name in the meeting, he also represents the Ellie Phillips Senior Center. In regards to the answer to that question, we are looking to break ground, hopefully the first week of September. So I'm not sure what's happening with the school calendar right now, but there will be work as school is in progress, which is why it's important to us that we have been in communication with the school district as well as the new principal.
Thank you. Did Mr. Kimball wish to share anything? I mean, did... Mr. Kimball?
Hi. This is David Kimball. I'm sorry the question was hard for me to hear.
I think it was in regards to the timing of construction.
Okay, yes. Construction is slated to start as soon as possible in September, and from there, it would be approximately eight to 10 months, is my understanding, for the construction period.
Councilmember Bergy, did you have a follow-up, or?
Thank you, Council President. No, I do not. That's awful. I'm just glad to hear there's communication between all parties, because that will be obviously important with that starting. The school, kids will be in session, well, yeah, I guess that can change, but right now, kids will be there at least four days a week, our first and second graders, so that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions from council, from Ms. Anderson, Mr. Kimball, or for Mr. And I am not seeing any. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Again, I'll ask if there's anyone, if there's anyone from the public that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Not seeing any? We will move on to agenda item number four, which is a public discussion on the City of Eau Claire's Safe Routes to Parks Plan. Good evening, Mr. Ivory.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to talk about, provide an overview of the Safe Routes to Parks Plan. Back in 2018, the bicycle and pedestrian plan that was adopted recommended preparation of this particular plan. The concept of this plan is similar to the Safe Routes to Schools Plan that was prepared back in 2018. The City of Eau Claire has been working with West Central Regional Plan Commission, who prepared the Safe Routes to Plan, Safe Routes to Park Plan for us. West Central was able to prepare the plan for us out of their community planning program that provides planning assistance to member organizations within the MPO. Work on the plan started back in early 2019, and we just recently finished the plan in the last couple of months. The purpose of the plan is to help the city create a safe environment for residents of all ages, walking and biking to get to our parks and open space areas. In addition, another objective of the plan is to increase park usage and promote a more healthy and active lifestyle within our neighborhood areas. This plan will be used as a guide by the city as we plan infrastructure improvements in the vicinity of the parks in order to address the walking and bicycling barriers and issues that we have identified through the process. As mentioned, the work on the plan started back in 2019, when we started to look at each of the parks that are shown here on the map. This map actually also shows our school sites within the city that also provide valuable open space, too. But as I mentioned before, the school sites are actually covered under the Safe Routes to Schools Plan. The background information that was put together by West Central Planning Commission included the demographic information for each of the service areas for each of the parks. And then they also identified the half-mile and the mile-walking distance for each of the parks. And what that means is, is basically the actual walking distance in order from your home to the park, the areas that are shaded in yellow would be those areas that are within a half-mile walking distance of the parks. This is a little bit different than what we use for our Parks Plan and our Comprehensive Plan. There, we use a half-mile radius, so actually, the half-mile radius would cover a larger area than what we're covering here in this plan. So with this plan here, we're actually looking at a little more concise area for each of the park areas. And then West Central also provided information on pedestrian bicycle crash statistics over a five-year period from 2014 through 2018. Also, as part of the project, West Central conducted an online community survey, and Eric Anderson, a senior planner from West Central, will be online shortly after this to talk a little bit about the community survey. And finally, the last piece of the puzzle in terms of putting this together were, we completed site visits or site audits of each of the park locations in order to help identify the park barriers, the needs and the issues for each of the parks. This was done by staff from West Central. It was done by city staff. And then we also commissioned members from the Waterways and Parks Commission and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, who all volunteered to help conduct these audits. So we compiled all this information that we got from each park to identify what some of the issues and needs were. And then the final thing that we did is we did contact all the neighborhood associations once we had a draft plan put together and asked for their comment and suggestions, which we tried to fold into the plan also. And then the plan has been reviewed by the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee and also by the Waterways and Parks Commission, and they recommended approval. What I thought I would do is just highlight a couple pages from the plan to kind of give you a feel for the contents of the plan itself. This first map here is the existing conditions map that relates to the bicycle and pedestrian crashes that were identified over that five-year period. There were 166 that were identified during that period. As you can see from the map, the colored areas in kind of the core area of the downtown and along Water Street is where the concentration of those crashes occurred, which was somewhat understandable, because those are the areas where we see higher levels of bikes and higher levels of pedestrians. Of that, 23 of those crashes were identified as being serious in terms of that there was actually an injury involved, and then there were actually four fatalities in that figure of the 166. The next part of the plan is really kind of the major part of the plan, and these are the summary or fact sheets for each of the parks, and there involves two different pages for each park. So the map that's up on the, actually, if you want to, why don't you go back one, Kathy? Yeah, I'll go forward to then. Okay. This map here, or this sheet here, what we did is we did give you an example of new neighborhood park, but there's one of these for each of the 32 parks that are concluded within this plan. This particular sheet here gives quite a bit of information. It gives the demographic information in terms of the people that live within a half-a-mile walk distance of the particular park. Then it also gives the crash information related to bicycle and pedestrians. It's over on the left-hand side. And then we also identify the issues that came out of the review that are listed in the white on the left-hand side, and then also the strategies or what we would refer to as the recommendations. So every park has a sheet like this that contains all this particular information. If you want to back up one then, Kathy. And then this is the second sheet that would be for each park. This would provide the locational map in terms of where the park is located, and then it highlights the half-mile walk distance, and then it also shows the mile-walk distance. So the half-mile walk distance is in the lighter green, and then the darker green is the mile-walk distance. All right, if you want to move it forward to then, Kathy. And then near the end of the plan, after we go through each of the individual parks, we have some citywide strategies. A lot of these came up or were recurring themes in each of the parks, and I won't list all of these right here, but I guess we'll highlight just maybe four of the most common ones that came across as we reviewed all the parks. The first one is the installation of sidewalk and gap areas, and what I refer to there is where there was, maybe it was a full block where we were missing a sidewalk that was in proximity to the park, or it might be within a neighborhood area where there's a vacant lot and the sidewalk has not been installed yet. So we were identifying that as one of the major things we need to take a look at, is try to complete that sidewalk system in proximity to the parks. Second one was installing pedestrian signs and crosswalks near the parks, and this would help us in terms of for pedestrians and bicyclists to get across streets in order to get to the parks. And this would be primarily where there might be a collector's street involved or an arterial street involved, where we need to do a better job in providing pedestrian signage to get across those streets. The third item relates to reducing speed limits near the parks. We found that a number of parks had speed limits, streets near the parks that had speed limits of 30 miles an hour. What the plan recommends is that we take a look at the possibility or feasibility of reducing those speed limits to 25 miles an hour. There's been a number of national studies that have been done, and what they found in by reducing the speed limit from 30 miles an hour to 25 miles an hour, the severity of pedestrian crashes are reduced significantly by reducing that speed limit by five miles an hour. So we'd want to take a look at that in some of these areas by the parks. And then the last item that was kind of a recurring theme was the need to provide bicycle parking at each of the parks. Just about all the parks were lacking that, with just a few exceptions. We'd want to see if we can provide that. One thing I did want to point out, and Councilman Gregor sent me an email this morning that indicated that, he noted that there were four parks that were not listed in the plan. Just wanted to kind of go over that. Lake Shore Neighborhood Park was not listed, and the reason that that's not in there is that as part of the Safe Routes to Schools Plan, we did include Lake Shore School, being that the park and the school are right close, basically right next to each other. That's the reason why the park itself was not specifically located. Also, Archery Park was not listed in the plan. The reason for that is we do not have any specific facilities at Archery Park right now, so we really consider that part of our Greenway system, so that's why we did not have Archery Park listed. The Northwest Park, we don't have listed also. Again, the primary reason that we did not have that listed was that currently we do not have any specific facilities there. Granted, we do have some trail systems there, but no specific infrastructure that's been set up there, plus the neighborhood to the west of that is currently in the development stage, and we felt it was a little bit difficult to come up with some specific recommendations for that park. However, the recommendations that we do have in the plan for the Jeffers Road Fields, which is just to the west and a little bit to the north, would be very similar to what we would see for the Northwest Park in terms of a lot of pedestrian and bicycle recommendations for Jeffers Road, which is, I think, planned for reconstruction in 2022. And then the last park that was not mentioned was Half Moon Beach, and I gave that a little bit of thought, and I think our thought there was is we actually combined or lumped that together with our recommendations and issues related to Carson Park. The main recommendation that relates to Half Moon Beach is improving the, some pedestrian crossings at the intersection of Whipple Street and Madison Street, and that both impacts the Half Moon Beach and Carson Park, so that's why we didn't have that. My suggestion there would be we could put a footnote in the Carson Park section indicating that the Half Moon Beach is included in that part in order to, just to make sure we're covered there. So with that, if you have any questions of myself, and then I mentioned Eric Anderson, a senior planner with West Central, is here online to provide some comments. Eric was the lead staff person for West Central, and we really wanted to thank him for all his work in putting this plan together for us.
Mr. Anderson, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Good evening. Did you have any additional comments or that you wish to share?
Yeah, Pat said I can go over some of the survey results here, so I'll go over a couple pages real quick, if that's okay with everybody?
Certainly.
Yep. And for those of you that have the plan open right now, on page 18, we had a couple, this was a pretty short survey that we gave people, and half of it, we asked specific questions, and then the other half, we allowed them to answer some open-ended questions, and those answers you can find in the appendix at the end of the document. But three or four of the major questions, a couple of them are on page 18. And question number one is, how safe do you consider walking and biking to parks in the City of Eau Claire? You can see there that a total of about, I would say, close to 20% maybe felt somewhat unsafe. The overwhelming majority of people felt between very safe and some sort of normal feeling of safety, so that was a good sign. And then the second question there on page 18 is, how enjoyable do you consider walking and biking to parks in the City of Eau Claire? What we wanted to do is we wanted to separate those two things. We thought safety and enjoyment were two different things. So you can see there, people actually thought it was very enjoyable to walk or bike the parks within the city. So that's a really good sign as well. So the next page that I just want to talk about real quick is on page 20 and 21, and specifically page 20. And so we did a little spreadsheet here in the plan document here, and the question was, what makes walking and biking to parks in the City of Eau Claire difficult and/or unpleasant? And so here, we have the items color-coded there, so you can see, everything below 20% is colored in gray. We have 20 to 29% in a light blue. A medium blue is 30 to 39%, and then a darker blue is 40% or more. And so you can see the common themes there. What we decided to do as well is that last row is we combined somewhat of a problem and absolute barrier, and then number four, which was between those two. And you can see that traffic was the major reason for walking and biking to parks being difficult and/or unpleasant. So you can see, too much traffic, speed of traffic, not enough safe ways to cross streets. And as Pat mentioned earlier, bike parking. So we thought that the majority of parks in the city actually don't have bike parking, so that was highlighted as well, so. And then one thing as well is, this plan was pretty much specifically for getting two parks, except for Carson Park. What the city staff wanted to do and the task force wanted to do was use this opportunity to look at the circulation system within Carson Park itself, and so we asked that question there, and those responses are on page 21, so. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions that anybody has on the council.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there any questions from council, from Mr. Ivory or for Mr. Anderson in regards to the Safe Routes to Parks? Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you for the presentation on the Safe Routes to Parks Plan. It was, I enjoyed reading it. It's a very good, very good plan. good plan. I think very easy to read and to understand, and I like the pictures. I am going to put on my winter mission hat, even though it's July. And I'm, I'm wondering as we work towards making parks more year-round friendly, especially with more winter gear at the parks and at the libraries that people can check out. I'm wondering if that came up in discussion at all. I didn't read anything about winter, and that's, as we all know, about half our years here in Wisconsin. So I just wonder if that was a part of the discussion, or if there's any thoughts about that, whether it be challenges in addition to what you talked about, or just wondering if that was a part of anything, the discussion.
This is Pat here. We didn't specifically separate out our discussion between summer and winter. I guess, first of all, the focus of the plan, as Eric had mentioned, is looking at providing the, or looking at the accessibility or access to the parks. It was not really looking at the programming within the parks. So I guess my feeling is, in terms of looking at issues related to, to winter, it would primarily be related to making sure that the access routes to those parks are free and open from snow and ice, which would be similar to any other sidewalks or, or pathways. So we didn't specifically identify that in the plan.
Any other questions from council? Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, President Welton. Thank you, Mr. Ivory and, and Mr. Anderson for all of your work and leading the way on this plan. I think it's really amazing. What I wanted to ask about is just kind of maybe for the rest of the council's benefit, I appreciate some of the, some of the coverage of the, the things I brought up, the email in the presentation. But kind of diving in a little bit to the, to the two big issues that were identified, one of them being not enough ways to cross busy streets, and the second one being speed of traffic. I guess one of the citywide recommendations that I would like to be included in this plan with regard to not, to, to helping people cross busy streets would be that the plan recommends that traffic signals detect bicyclists in order to allow them to cross without having to get off their bike and push a button at a pedestrian crossing. So I guess if you, I was thinking about like the best way that we could have that considered, and it sounds like it could be something that the plan could be amended to include, like at tomorrow's meeting, if, if that was of interest to the council.
Yes, I think under the citywide recommendation section, we could add some narrative or something about the bicycle detection at signals would be considered or studied as those signals are upgraded and some, something like that. That is a, something that we are looking at as we upgrade or look at changing out our signals. And it's something that has been identified in our bike and pedestrian plan too, that we want to provide that signal detection at the signals too. So it would just be consistent with the bike plan.
Right, thank you. Do you have a follow-up question?
Certainly.
Just on that, on the second big issue, and that being the speed of traffic, some of the language used there to describe the strategy, which is to study the benefits of reducing the speed limit to 25 miles per hour in your parks, is something I wanted to raise, you know, as a question of if we want to change the word, you know, study the benefits to, to study the feasibility. Because I think they're somewhat of different things, and they, maybe feasibility is more comprehensive of the, of the strategy. So I don't know, just wanted to see if there are any thoughts on that from, from Mr. Ivory or, or Mr. Anderson with regard to some of that language, in terms of how he can tackle that question of speed.
Well, I think changing the word out from benefits to feasibility would, would be fine. I guess our thought when we included that recommendation is, is not only looking, when we are looking at a specific street in terms of whether that speed limit should be changed from 30 to 25, not only looking at how that impacts the pedestrians and the bicyclists, but other, the other modes of travel, particularly the vehicles, in terms of what, what the, what the 85 percentile speed on those particular roads are. So we would want to do some kind of a speed study on those, on those particular roads. So that's why we probably use the word, word benefits, but certainly that can be interchangeable with looking at the feasibility of changing it from 30 miles an hour to 25. That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Mr. Ivory and Mr. Anderson, for the, the work you've done on this. It's a, it's a, again, a beautiful tool for our community. I have just two very general questions for the public. And I'm wondering if there are going to be any printed reports available selectively?
Yes. What we, what we will be doing is we'll have copies available at a couple different places. We always, I shouldn't say always, we try to make copies available over at the public library. And then we have copies available in our office. And then I assume over at West Central Regional Planning, they'll have copies available too. So that will be paper copies. We do have this available online at a couple different spots within our city website also. So we'll try to make all those available.
Would you just point out where would somebody go to find this on the website? Would it be under your department section?
Right now, it's in two locations. It's under Community Development, and then under, under Comprehensive Plans, and then Plans. And then it also is under the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission section for, under Plans.
Thank you. And then I'm, I know that you notified all of the neighborhood associations to get their input. I really appreciate that, of allowing them to give some feedback directly to the parks that were in their, their areas. What, once this is adopted, what is your implementation timeline?
The, the recommendations that we have near the end of the plan, we, we set up kind of two general timeframes, one more immediate, then one more a little bit longer term. The more immediate basically is this year, next year, and maybe leading into 2022. And then the next would be 22 to 23, essentially. Some of them, some of these might be a little further out because they would be more tied in with specific street construction projects. For example, Jeffers Road, Riverview Drive, the north end of that, and Fairfax and some of those. So some of them are kind of tied in with those street projects, but a lot of these things we're, we anticipate that we can do within a relatively short timeframe of three to four years or so. But, and what we're, our goal is, is basically we want some we can do immediately in terms of improve some better signage at the parks, when we're looking at maybe installing some crosswalks and things like that. So those are things we can do relatively easy. Some of the more involved things might have to wait until we actually do a street reconstruction project in the vicinity of that park.
Thank you. So without committing you to anything, you're, you're expecting that those strategies that you're really paying attention to, two to three years will be in place. Thank you. Thank you so much.
And we do use this plan as, as a, as a working document. I guess a good example is our Safe Routes to Schools Plan. Whenever we have a street project that comes up in the vicinity of one of our schools, we use that plan very regularly. We'll take a look at in terms of what the recommendations were to help improve the accessibility and safety within that school. So we would do the same here. When we have a street project come up, we'll pull out this plan and take a look and see what we should be looking for as we start doing our, our design.
Are there any other questions from Mr. Ivory or from Mr. Anderson from council? And I do not see any. Mr. Ivory, thank you. Mr. Anderson, thank you for all your work to everyone. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
This is again up for public discussion. And if there's anyone here that wishes to speak to this agenda item, please raise your hand or wave your hand. Again, if there anyone wishes to speak to this agenda item. Not seeing any. We'll move on to agenda item number five, which is a public discussion of the proposed 2021-2025 to 2025 Capital Improvement Plan for the city of Eau Claire. Mr. Wenzans, good evening.
Good evening, Council President, members of the city council. This evening is another opportunity for members of the community and for the city council to ask questions concerning the 2021-2025 CIP and/or make comments to the city council for you all to consider in your deliberations tomorrow evening, when the CIP is scheduled for action by the city council. Next slide, please, Kathy. So we're going to talk a little bit, as we have in the past, about the operating budget versus the CIP, talk a little bit about our fiscal strategy, compliance with our financial policies, and then a little bit about issues beyond the scope of this five-year CIP, and then what the next steps are. Next slide, please. So the operating budget funds the ongoing operations of the city, and it is subject to what we refer to as levy limits. These are statutorily imposed limits on how much a city can increase the property tax levy, which is limited to what is referred to as net new construction. The Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP, which we're really talking about this, this evening, is not subject to those same levy limits. In this plan, we lay out what the next year's capital budget is anticipated to be, and also the capital plan for the next four years. Funded primarily from what we refer to as fund balance, otherwise you could think of fund balance as our savings account, and also the issuance of debt, which is similar to what you may do when you borrow money to make home improvements or repairs. As I mentioned, debt services exempt from levy limits. Next slide, please. So within the Capital Improvement Plan, we include what are referred to as capital projects. And things included in the CIP are projects where funds are used to buy, maintain, or improve fixed assets, such as buildings, vehicles, equipment, or land. It's considered a capital expenditure when the asset is newly purchased, or when money is used for extending the useful life of an existing asset by at least one year, such as repairing the roof on a building. In order to be included in the CIP, the project cost must exceed $5,000. And the costs for items in the CIP are usually one-time in nature. Next slide, please. The CIP is a planning document, and it allows us to anticipate and plan for future capital needs. Very important, in, in my opinion, to do this because we have various fiscal strategies that we need to make sure we're continuing to comply with, and we need to anticipate future capital needs and expenditures in order to be able to do that. New projects should be added in the latter years of the CIP. So again, part of the purpose in doing this planning is that most of the projects for the, that are in the CIP for 2021, the city council usually has seen those for several years as, as we look into the future. So when we add projects, we prefer to add those in the latter years of the CIP as opposed to jumping them, jumping those projects ahead of others, which have been planned for for a number of years. Also, within the CIP, we have what we call new projects versus maintenance projects. Most of the expenditures within the CIP are for maintenance-type projects. We have an aging infrastructure, like many communities across this country, and that infrastructure requires ongoing repairs in order for it to continue to function in an appropriate manner. We also have to have the CIP comply with both state, as well as city council, debt and fund balance policies. I'll talk a little bit about those a little later in the presentation. Next slide, please. So the calendar for this CIP, back in May, it was distributed electronically to the city council. On May 26, the city council held a work session on the CIP. On June 15, the Plan Commission reviewed the CIP. On June 17, the Transit Commission reviewed the CIP. On June 24, the Waterways and Parks Commission reviewed the CIP. Then on June 14, or excuse me, July 14, not on this slide, but July 14, the city council had a public discussion on, in a work session on the CIP, excuse me, not a public discussion, a work session. And then here we are on July 27 with a public discussion. And July 28, we'll, tomorrow, will be city council action on the CIP. Next slide, please. So this CIP uses about $3.05 million in fund balance. It requires approximately $9.5 million in new tax-supported borrowing. That borrowing will increase our annual debt service by approximately $331,000 or 3.7%, beginning in 2022. It will cost the owner of a home with an assessed value of $174,000 approximately $11 per year in additional property taxes. Next slide. So just going quickly through each of the funds and highlighting a few projects within the water fund, $2.7 million, $7.5 million is included for a backup generator. $1.15 million is included for a solar electric project to reduce the dependence of the water facility on, on the electric grid. $214,000 is included in the final year of this CIP for lead service replacement. Most of those lead service replacements at the present time are being funded by a grant through the Wisconsin DNR, but we anticipate that those funds will run out in 2025. And we want to continue funding the replacement of lead services. So we're proposing to use, use city funds to continue that project. And lastly, in the final year of the CIP, there's $150,000 provided to begin design work on a, an additional water crossing of the, of the Chippewa River. Next slide, please. Within the sewer fund, we've got a replacement of the Chippewa River Interceptor. This is the interceptor that runs along the Chippewa River behind the properties on Water Street and behind the planned location of the Son and Tag Event Center. And also a screw pump rebuild for $1.1 million. This is the headworks to the treatment facility and brings all the effluent into the facility for treatment. Next slide, please. Within the stormwater fund, we've got a replacement of the Halsey Street Relief Storm Sewer at a cost of approximately $650,000. This is to address flooding issues in the Halsey Street and Hamilton Avenue vicinity. And also a reconstruction of the levy north of Madison Street at a total cost of $1.1 million. Next slide, please. Within the parking fund, even though it was recently constructed, or seems very recent, we are already planning for maintenance at the Galloway Street ramp, totally $905,000. In addition, we're proposing repairs to the parking deck at the Riverside ramp at $560,000. In addition, we're proposing repairs to the parking deck at the Riverside ramp at $560,000. Last but not least is the Gibson ramp, and this really falls into the category of beyond the scope of this CIP. But the Gibson ramp is nearing the end of its useful life and we anticipate that somewhere between five and 10 years from now or 2026 and 2030, that that ramp will need to be replaced. And that is a very significant capital expenditure anticipated and something that we will need to have future planning discussions with about with the city council because, again, very large planned expenditure for that. Next slide, please. Within the public transit fund, we've got about $371,000 planned for bus stop shelters. A little bit different than in prior years in that in the past, we were the bus stop shelters were dependent upon the receipt of federal grants. We're we're planning to fund those all locally at this point because federal grants simply haven't been available for those purposes in recent years. This CIP also begins the implementation of electric buses in the city of Eau Claire, beginning with the charging infrastructure, totaling three-quarters of a million dollars. In order to operate electric buses, we need to be able to charge the batteries. Also included is a UW Eau Claire Transit Hub at $1.7 million. And lastly, in the final year of this CIP, 2025, we begin the replacement of clean diesel buses with electric buses, and we've included $2.2 million or two electric buses. Next slide, please. Within the Hobbs Ice Center, we're anticipating replacing the lighting, existing lighting with LED lights at a cost of $428,000. This should reduce energy consumption at the ice facility, again, reducing our dependence on the on the electric grid. And also looking at the refrigeration system and flooring for the O'Brien and Akervik rinks, those that refrigeration system and the flooring is ending is reaching the end of its useful life and will need to be replaced. The $300,000 included in this CIP is for design work associated with that replacement. The actual construction costs for the replacement is beyond the five-year horizon of this CIP. Next slide, please. Fairfax Pool included $54,000 for additional shade features. That's one of the major complaints that we get at Fairfax Pool is lack of shade for people who may be there watching their watching their children. Also included is $728,000 to replace the retaining wall and the water slide and also $145,000 for pool painting as well as replacement of the existing diving board. Next slide, please. Within central equipment, the facility that houses our central equipment function continues to age and we've included a total of $2.5 million over the five years of this CIP to to maintain and upgrade that particular facility. Next. Within our land building and equipment fund, several interesting projects here, first of those being the public safety video systems, total of $810,000 in both city and county funds going towards that project. Included in your your agenda packets was a memo from the city manager that talks about his changes to the recommended manager's CIP to move up the replacement of the of the, excuse me, of the video system replacements. So in the city manager's proposal, the public safety video systems would move up from 2022 and 2023 and funding would primarily be in 2021 with a little bit of funding in 2022. We do anticipate that this project will extend over over a two-year period and that's why we split the funding, but again, it would be implementation would begin in in 2021. This land building and equipment fund also includes our renewable energy initiatives at $2.1 million over the five years of the CIP, includes continuation of the participatory budgeting initiative with $500,000, again, over the five years of the CIP, continues our affordable housing initiative with a total of $550,000 over the five years of the CIP. In addition, we are planning to do some renovations and upgrades to what is referred to as the City Hall East Wing or the wing of the City Hall that houses our elections function as well as the fire station on the upper floors. That totals $1.3 million. Also, we're looking at replacing a our radio communication equipment that's used by the 911 center. This is a $1.8 million project that will be jointly funded by the city and county and also with our countywide communication system. This is an $885,000 project, again, jointly funded by the two entities. And last, in land building and equipment, we are looking at replacing fire station number two. Again, this is our central fire station located adjacent to City Hall. We've included $800,000 in the final year of this CIP to begin the process of design and land acquisition for a new fire station. Next slide, please. Within our transportation improvements fund, continuing our citywide trail program with $2.3 million provided over the five years of the CIP and also looking at two major street projects, Fairfax Street at $1.55 million and Jeffers Road at $1.05 million. And lastly, looking at continuing safety improvements at various railroad locations, totaling $6.6 million. Next slide. Within our parks and recreation fund, looking at improvements to the Northwest Unity Park at $439,000, Carson Park restroom, $214,000, relocation of Roosevelt Park totaling $444,000. And lastly, improvements to Princeton Valley Park totaling $350,000. Next slide, please. Within tid number nine, which is the Gateway Industrial Area, $4 million is being proposed for land acquisition. This would hopefully acquire sufficient industrial land for the long-term future of industrial development within within Eau Claire. Next slide, please. Tid number 12, which is the Water Street tid, we are looking at trail improvements totaling $1.5 million. This would be to the Chippewa River Trail that runs behind various businesses along Water Street and ultimately out to the Son and Tag Event Center location. And also considering parking lot improvements totaling approximately $2.4 million to provide additional parking for Water Street businesses and also additional off-street parking for potential use by people residing within the neighborhood. Next slide, please. And last is tid number 13. This is the Canary Redevelopment Area and $3.8 million is anticipated for park development within this particular area and also $1.515 million for street improvements. Next slide, please. So looking at our financial policies, there are several different city council financial policies that come into play in considering the CIP. One of those is our assigned fund balance and the council's financial policies indicate that our assigned fund balance should be equal to or greater than 15% of the ensuing general fund expenditures with a goal of 20% and that funds in excess of 15% may be used for capital expenditures. So as I mentioned, in the first year of the CIP, a little bit over $3 million in fund balance is being used and then additional amounts are anticipated in future years. What this graph here shows is the kind of reddish-orangeish bar running across the graph represents the range of 15 to 20% of ensuing year's general fund expenditures and the blue bars represent our unassigned fund balance. So as you can see, our unassigned fund balance does decrease throughout the course of the CIP, but at the end of this CIP is still well within the 15 to 20% range and is actually in excess of 19%. Next slide, please. Second city council financial policy is that the total indebtedness of the city shall not exceed 5% of equalized valuation and 3.5% of equalized valuation. So the 5% of equalized valuation is actually the state or statutory requirement and 3.5% is the city council requirement. The 5% of equalized value is represented by the yellow line. 3.5% of equalized value is represented by the orange line and the blue bars are our total indebtedness. So as you can see, throughout the course of the five years of this CIP, our total indebtedness does increase. It does actually start dropping off towards the end of the CIP and still remains well below 3.5% of equalized value, which is the city council policy. Next slide, please. The council financial policies also indicate that our net direct debt should be less than or equal to three times the operating revenue of the city. So the yellow line on this graph represents three times the operating revenues and the blue bars represent our net direct debt. So as you can see, our net direct debt does grow over the five years of this CIP and gets very close to three times of our three times our operating revenues, but does start dropping off towards the last year of the CIP. Next slide, please. Our levy for debt service shall not exceed 25% of the total property tax levy. So the blue line in this graph represents 25% of the total property tax levy. The yellow portions of the bars represent our current levy for debt service and then the orange portions of the bar represent the additional levy for debt issues part of the five-year CIP. And as you can see, our bars, both the yellow and the orange portions, do remain blue below the blue line, which represents the total property tax or 25% of the total property tax levy. So we do continue to remain in compliance with this financial policy. Next slide, please. And beyond the the scope of this CIP, and you've seen these numbers before, but I just want to, I guess, reiterate them, that the total non-transportation-related projects in this five-year CIP that are paid through property taxes totaled $26.7 million. The total non-transportation-related projects funded through property taxes that were deferred from this CIP, so they're still hanging out there for the next five years, in the next five years, totaled $41.5 million. And I mentioned some of those projects, the fire station, renovations to to Hobbs, replacement of parking structures. These are going to be very large capital projects that are looming in the six-to-10-year period and those are projects that we as a city are going to need to plan for so that we're in a position to be able to finance them when when the time comes. Next slide, please. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council for Mr. Winsenz? Any questions from council? I am not seeing any. Thank you, Mr. Winsenz. Again, this is a public discussion and if anyone wishes to speak to this agenda item, if you would raise your hand. Christopher Martin. Mr. Martin? Are you there? Are you there?
Do I keep seeing the report? It keeps unmuting me.
Yep. I'm unmuting you. So just go ahead. You can go ahead and speak.
Can you hear me at all?
We can hear you, yeah?
Okay, good. Sorry, it's really weird. So I got a question. Sorry, I get the presenter's name. Does the CIP typically include public utility expenditures?
Mr. Winsenz.
Yes, the the CIP does include expenditures for the water utility, the sewer utility, and the stormwater utility, so those are included within the five years of this CIP.
Okay. Now, I'm going to be talking about the public IC in the public section and I'm just curious as to whether a public IC, public utility, is actually created in the city of Eau Claire be covered by CIP set up like this? In your opinion?
Mr. Winsenz.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the beginning of the question, Council President.
Okay, and Mr. Martin, before we get too far into this, if I could get your address, please?
412 Chauncey Street.
412 Chauncey Street. Okay. And then could you repeat your question for Mr. Winsenz?
So as I said, I will be speaking on a public IC proposal later on during the public time. I'm just curious if such a utility would be taken into consideration under the CIP.
The the only utilities that we have or that the city operates, again, are those that I that I listed before, our sewer utility, our water utility, and our stormwater utility. So those are the only utilities that would be listed or included within this CIP because those are the utilities that are controlled by the city of Eau Claire.
I see. So that does not include the SYNNEX system or any of the communication utilities that are utilized by the city?
No, it does not. We do not own or operate those utilities and have no control over them.
All right, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Ms. Wolfgram.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Good evening.
Good evening. Council President Walden, members of the city council, my name is Susan Wolfgram. I live at 550 Graham Avenue, Eau Claire. I sit on the Plan Commission and I'm co-chair of the Jonah Affordable Housing Task Force. My comments this evening are extensive, but they are within the five-minute limit. Anti-racist policy and practice creates systems that center the lived experiences of Black, Indigenous, and people of color, produce targeted strategies that account for the disparate harm caused within these communities, and in the end, improve outcomes for all of us. An anti-racist framework shifts our focus from the intent of our actions to the outcome of our actions, whether we advance racial equity or we uphold racial inequity. On July 22, our city took a significant step towards creating an anti-racist framework for local governance by responding to impacted and diverse voices in our community and holding a listening session to discuss the capital improvement plan policing in our city and other issues of equity and inclusion. According to the National League of Cities, city- According to the National League of Cities, city budgets are important places to start to prioritize racial equity through targeted investment. Cities are both conducting regular racial equity assessments of budget decisions and making decisions driven by a desire to address those inequities and systemic racism. This structural and systemic change can be achieved only when you have impacted persons participating at the tables making those decisions. On July 22nd, our capital improvement plan became an initial point of entry into a much more contextual and relevant discussion of true community participation in local government beyond tokenism. Appreciation is extended to my John who organized the listening session, those city council members present during the session, as well as city manager Dale Peters, chief of police Matt Rokas, officer Chad Hoyer, and state senator Jeff Smith, who were present to listen. Acknowledgement also is extended to the full Plan Commission, who on June 15th unanimously voted to support an amendment to the resolution adopting the CIP, advising city councils that this community conversation take place before the city council's final vote tomorrow, July 28th. This listening session was recorded, and it is my hope that all city council members and staff will have an opportunity to view it. I wanted to share this evening, from my listening perspective, some takeaways and next steps, including but not limited to: to reimagine the participatory budgeting plan that is underway, to not only define the plan as allocating $100,000 per year the next five years to projects guided by our community members, but to also include a second structural component of community review of budgets. As I stated earlier, true inclusive governance places diverse community members participating in regular racial equity assessments of budget decisions and making decisions driven by a desire to address those inequities. For the city council to redirect monies from the police budget ahead of the 2021 capital improvement plan to support and create a Mung bilingual community liaison position. This person should be Mung and will help Mung families navigate services and programs that our city has to offer, as well as partner with the police and collaborate with the Black and Brown Women's Power Coalition. For the city council, city manager, chief of police, and sheriff Kramer to conduct Zoom meetings, outreach into underrepresented communities through leaders in these communities, to ask, "How do you want to be policed? Who do we want to be?" Participant comments related to policing in our city included: "I'm from Buffalo, New York. Growing up, the officer in our neighborhood knew us. He spent all day with us. He was from the community. He was one of us. As a Mung woman, there are lines in Eau Claire that I do not cross, that I do not feel safe going into. If you do not see someone that looks like you, I get afraid when someone pulls up behind me. I have gotten pulled over in Eau Claire randomly and an officer asking me, 'What was I doing here?'" What are the metrics of good policing in Eau Claire? We have a definite disconnect between our community and Sheriff Kramer. He needs to be present at events and listen. I have heard Sheriff Kramer say in a conversation with him that, quote, "When I hear about racism in Eau Claire, I just don't see it," end of quote. That was disappointing to me. We need to assess these budgets and identify where we are choosing to invest. If we choose to invest in closing equity gaps, then public safety will follow. We have over-relied on the police. What can we take off your shoulders? We need public de-escalation training, a decriminalization, felonization of the quote-unquote petty things, a review of ordinances and laws to identify what can be changed for trained members of the public to intervene on, perhaps community de-escalation members in our schools. Our city needs cultural comprehension, that when people come here, they know they will be safe. What does safety and smart justice look like for Eau Claire, building an inclusive community? In closing, the practice of anti-racism is everyone's ongoing work. To identify racist policies, practices, and procedures and replace them with anti-racist policies, practices, procedures, and again, anti-racist policy creates systems that center the lived experiences of Black, Indigenous, and people of color. We hear much about cultural competence. I taught cultural competence for years at Stoughton, in addition to providing workshops and training. Instead of cultural competence, which is a skill set, we need, from my perspective, to start with cultural humility, to be willing to step back, listen, and come from a position of not knowing. Our city took that step on July 22nd, and I look forward to continuing the willingness to suspend traditional practice and work towards a more inclusive and equitable city government, improving outcomes for all. I appreciate your consideration of my comments. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Wolfgram? Tru Vu?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes. Go ahead.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you so much. My name is Tru Vu, and I reside on 1614 Tumis Drive. And thank you so much, Susan. And I'm just going to ride on with what your comment was, too, and I fully support what you said. And I'm still going to strive on and ask that we really, really help support the Mung community, especially during this time, and really taking this budget and helping us build a Mung bilingual community liaison, because this community truly needs it. After speaking a couple of times with the city council and speaking with my Mung community, there are so many people who want to voice out, but they don't, they can't, or they're nervous, too. So I am the voice of them, and they have come to me and said that they do want this position, that we are taxpayers, we are residents in Eau Claire, that this is a need, that there is a huge need for this position. So I just hope that you would take my comments here and know that the people in your community, the biggest minority group in your community, is voicing out for this Mung bilingual community liaison, because we truly need it. And I just want to emphasize this. I know Pa is on here, and she's going to talk more about it, too. So I will pass it on. Thank you so much for listening to my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Vu. Are there any questions from council? I don't see any. Mr. Seidel? Are you there?
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yeah.
All right. I want to thank Suzanne Wolfgram for her statements. Some of what she mentioned was part of the conversation that I was able to be a part of, specifically with the sheriff and my disappointment with his statement about not being able to see racism here in Eau Claire.
Mr. Seidel?
Oh, yes. This is Luke Seidel, and I reside at 738 Third Avenue here in Eau Claire. I do have a question. I want to place my statement here in the right part of this meeting, and I'm not quite sure. So my question to the council would be concerning budgetary provisions for things like rubber bullets and tear gas, which could be defined as chemical irritants and less-than-lethal or non-lethal rounds. I'm wondering if that plugs into the CIP. I don't want to place my question here and my statement here if it does not. So I'm wondering if I should leave that to the end of the meeting or if we're already there. It's been kind of hard to keep up with the conversation over WebEx. I'm new to it. So I'm wondering if maybe President Wild could answer that question for me.
Well, Mr. Windsands, I don't know specifically if we have, you know, money set aside or budgeted for those items. I would imagine those are more operating costs, if they're even used. But, Mr. Windsands, are you there?
I am, Council President Wild. And to the extent that those items are used by the Eau Claire Police Department, the purchase of those items would be included within their operating budget. In the past, I believe, previous CIPs were used to fund less-than-lethal equipment, but not, it wouldn't be the rounds, the rubber bullets, or the bean bags, or the tear gas themselves, but the actual weapons used to discharge those devices. But I don't believe any of those items are included in this CIP, so they would be more appropriately addressed in the operating budget.
Thank you, Mr. Windsands. Mr. Seidel, does that answer your question for?
Yes. So then, my question to you, Mr. Wild, would be, should I wait until the end of the meeting or?
Certainly. Probably for the public commentary period would be probably more appropriate.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear that.
I said, the question would probably be more appropriate for the public commentary period at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Then I'll forfeit my time.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pa Tao? Mr. Pa?
Hello. Thank you. My name is Pa Tao. I reside at 8651 Apple Road here in Eau Claire. I'm a longtime resident of Eau Claire and have worked over the years with the Mung community in Eau Claire. Today, I am talking on behalf of the Black and Brown Women's Power Coalition. I'll ask for you to divert the best money to support a Mung community liaison position. Mung community has been in need for well over 40 years, and we have never had such a position at a city level that will assist our families navigate the different systems and the different services our city has to offer. Services such as the Parks and Parks Department, such as planning and assessment, things that are essential to families who live in our community. So I ask for the council to reject money from the police budget as part of the Caprice who approved my plan ahead of the 2021 budget to support and create a Mung community liaison position. This is a position that we envision will help families navigate the different systems and the different services our city has to offer, as well as help our families reengage in city services and council meetings and whatnot. Research shows that a living wage, access to health services and treatment, educational opportunities, and safer housing are far more successful at promoting safe communities than clean prisons. As such, the community liaison position will be able to do that, help families access the needed services that they need, including services at the police department. Having so much bilingual at the city to help families access needing services ensures that their needs are met and that services are accessible and that it is equitable. As such, we are asking our city council to make aggressive financial support to be directed to those areas in creating the Mung community liaison position. Over the country, people are marching in the streets because they know that its actions will result in a healthier, more just society. And so that's why we're asking you today to take immediate steps, immediate action, to support a position that will help Mung families and our community. Thank you for your time this evening. I appreciate your consideration of such a position, and I look forward to working with the city of Eau Claire and the Eau Claire Police Department to come up with solutions that will help our community further. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tao. Are there any questions from council? Thank you again. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Again, I'll ask if there's anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item. Seeing none? We will close the public discussion and hearing and move on to the public commentary period. Mr. Windsands, good night and thank you. In regards to the public commentary period, I'm just going to go through the protocol in regards to that. For those of you that wish to speak, again, during this period, please click on the icon to raise your hand. I will call on you in the order in which they appear on my screen. Please state your name and your city of Eau Claire address. Public commentary period is for those living or working in the city of Eau Claire. Please note that your thoughts or ideas should be regarding issues or concerns of citywide application, and please do not comment on issues that were on tonight's agenda as council wants and needs to hear those comments during the noticed hearing or discussion. Also, please be aware that during this public comment period, council members are not allowed to ask questions or comment on your remarks. So please do not misinterpret our silence. We are listening. You will have three minutes to speak, and I will notify when you have one minute remaining. This comment period will last for 20 minutes unless it is the wish of two-thirds of the council to extend it. Again, if you decide not to speak, you are welcome to email or call us at any time. So, those that wish to speak? Mr. Holman? Ben Holman?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ben Holman, and I live at 1727 West Mead Street. Thank you for your service to our community. Your leadership is so critical in the midst of this pandemic. I'm one of the organizers of a petition that received an overwhelming response over the last week and a half. After you passed a resolution in support of mask wearing in our community, we circulated a petition asking you to take the next step and make mask wearing mandatory in indoor spaces. Our petition attracted the attention of many like-minded citizens, and we received over 1,500 signatures in the first 24 hours. In total, 1,833 city of Eau Claire residents signed the following petition. Quote, "In the interest of preventing the spread of the COVID-19 virus, we, the undersigned, request that the Eau Claire City Council, with immediacy, adopt an ordinance to require the wearing of a face mask in all indoor public spaces while riding public transportation and while driving or riding in a ride-sharing vehicle within the city limits of Eau Claire. We suggest this ordinance would apply to all individuals age five and older, with reasonable exception," unquote. The language of our petition was inspired by health orders and ordinances in other communities that have led the way. We expect that the text of an ordinance in Eau Claire would vary from what we provided, but the spirit is the same: require widespread mask wearing to curtail the spread of COVID-19. It's our hope that such a measure would reduce illness, save lives, and speed our return to its normalcy. It's known restrictions implemented by individual retailers are encouraging to us, but insufficient. Without a mandate, many residents will not voluntarily wear masks, and many businesses will not require customers to wear masks. I believe that we will not see the public health benefits of mask wearing if we rely on voluntary compliance. Now, we do understand that a mandate could be implemented by the state of Wisconsin, the city county health department, by the city manager, or by the city council. So far, those with the power to implement a mandate have not taken action. So tonight, we're asking you, our elected officials, to take the action that others have not. 1,833 of your constituents ask you to add a mask mandate ordinance to the very next city council agenda. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Thank you, Mr. Holman. Kayla. Kayla, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yep.
Hi, this is Kayla Rick, address 3348 Morgan Avenue.
Good evening.
City council members, thank you for the opportunity to give comments again today. I should also acknowledge that I've taken up a lot of individual council members' time lately on the phone, and want to say thank you again. I've appreciated the conversations and have a great deal of respect for the work you all do. So, thank you. Last time I spoke was July 13th, when you were voting on your statement regarding masks. Part of my comment was out of concern about this new culture that has developed around the fallacy that says, "If you don't have on a mask, you are selfish." I feel compelled to address this again tonight. Because of this belief, people in our community are experiencing bullying and shaming. As a school counselor, I have experience in identifying bullying behaviors and supporting our youth through it. I have worked with students who engage in such behaviors and have worked with students who feel targeted. While the skills I focus on with those students are different, the goal is always pro-social behavior and respect. Because of my experience and understanding of these behaviors, I feel obligated to be involved in our city and help change the conversation and culture at this time. It needs to be understood that wearing a mask is a choice that one can be free to make, but the lack of one does not conclude selfishness. I recently learned that an Eau Claire business owner is hard of hearing and therefore not requiring masks. He relies on lip reading to communicate and is private about this matter. His business is being boycotted and hate spread about him. I ask you to consider, is he selfish? I also know of an individual who is a victim of sexual assault. Due to the nature of her abuse, wearing a mask causes her to have panic attacks. Is she selfish? Another individual I know has asthma and does wear a mask when in crowded places, but uses discretion in uncrowded places. Is she selfish? All of these people have described feeling shamed by others. I think we can all agree that these individuals are not selfish in their reason to not wear a mask. Why then are they experiencing shaming and pressure without consideration for their physical and mental health? I truly believe all of you care about our city and the culture we allow to prevail. So I've written a petition asking for your support in passing an ordinance to protect health freedom and acknowledging the role choice plays in health and wellness. I will receive this petition soon. Of course, health freedom goes much beyond the choice to just wear a mask, and I have described it further in my petition. I ask that you help spread the message that everyone you encounter is fighting a battle you know nothing about. I only told you about the experience of three people I know. There are countless people who have a story like this and are experiencing hate instead of care. Ironically, this treatment comes from those who proclaim to care the most because they have a mask on. Let's change the beliefs around this issue with compassion and understanding for others. If someone is not wearing a mask, they should not be shamed or bullied. It should be assumed they have a reason to not wear a mask, and honestly, that reason is no one else's business. Combating the culture that has been created is something that you are uniquely positioned to help with. And having the freedom to choose whether to wear a mask or not is only a small part of what is needed to protect health freedom as a whole. I ask that you read the petition when you get it and consider ways that you can start reviving a positive, welcoming, and respectful culture in our community. Thank you again for your time and your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you. Rita Dorsey.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yep, go ahead.
Thank you. 333 Gibson Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm the general manager of the Lizmore Hotel. We closed all of our operations in March of this year to help flatten the curve of COVID. We reopened in June to limited operations. And when we decided to reopen, we wanted to take every precaution to keep our staff and our guests and our community safe. We made masks mandatory in our building for anyone entering, and we also enforced social distancing within our building. And because of that decision to keep the public health and safety at the forefront of our operating strategy, we have been targeted. In our coffee shop, ECDC, which has been open and requires masks, our baristas, line-level employees, have been harassed daily. We've received threatening messages on social media, and we have people entering our space blatantly refusing to follow our own rules in our own building, on our property. We're asking that city council pass this mandate because local businesses should not carry the responsibility of fighting for public health and safety on our own. We owe it to service industry workers. We owe it to business owners and managers, and we owe it to the soon-to-be overwhelmed healthcare system in our community to set clear mandates as other cities, counties, and states have done successfully. To the point of the previous speaker, if a mandate is passed and someone is not wearing a mask, I think the assumption would obviously be by everyone that that person has an underlying health condition that restricts them from being able to do so. And so even more so, the need for city council to move and move swiftly to pass a mask mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seidel.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, and this is Luke Seidel again. I reside at 738 Third Avenue in Eau Claire. And I would like to bring back attention to the rubber bullet and tear gas issue. I've spoken with multiple members of the council already and have tried to contact others, but like with the mask mandate, there's a lot of emails going through and a lot of phone calls as well. So I want to make a statement here before the councils to say that the Eau Claire Justice League is calling for the ban of tear gas and of rubber bullets. You may call them chemical irritants or non-lethal rounds. We are calling for the ban entirely in the city, and we're working to look at the county as well because we don't believe that those two agents have any place in law enforcement or in policing. Specifically, tear gas is an abort efficient which can terminate pregnancies in women. And I don't think the police department, and I most certainly am not in the business of deciding who and who is not a woman and who and who is not pregnant specifically. So I don't believe that anyone should be used, should have tear gas used against them. Specifically, rubber bullets. In Portland, there are therapy groups being put together of individuals who have lost eyes, who have lost body parts because of rubber bullet wounds from direct contact from point-blank range. And this might not be happening in Eau Claire, but we can't let it happen, and we must make sure that it doesn't. So I'm calling upon the city council and the chief of police, who I'm already working with, on a statement and a decision to ban rubber bullets and tear gas in the city. I've spoken with Dr. Salika Duxworth-Lauten of the PFC Commission, and as a commissioner and board member, she says that it is the outside of the PFC's limitations to pass policy like banning rubber bullets and tear gas. So I've spoken to some city councillors as well who say the same thing of this legislative body, the Eau Claire City Council. However, I believe it is someone's job in the city, and I believe it is the city council's job to pick up the ball and to take care of this issue. So, again, I'm asking for the city council to consider the ban of tear gas and rubber bullets. We will be working with the chief of police to put forward a unanimous decision that could be passed by the city council. Of course, if the city council wants to not be involved, and I've had this discussion with city council members here tonight, I would love to know the plan and the ideas moving forward with a ban or the possibility of a ban. I think it's very important that we involve the city council, whether they have an impact or a decision, a vote or not. It's important to involve all citizens here. So, to conclude, I want to make clear the Eau Claire Justice League's commitment and our passion to get rid of this. Get rid of this horrible, terrible, terrible tactic of controlling police, police control of crowds and of individuals in residences and anywhere in the city. So this discussion is ongoing, and we are working with all of the local leaders that we can, but we are looking at input from the city council, and I'd love to hear from individuals about the role that the city council can play. But I truly believe that it is the city council's position to vote upon a ban. And I would challenge you to respond to that and confirm or deny the city council's legislative role and their role in passing an ordinance of such an ordinance or referendum, whatever we want to call it, on the ban of rubber bullets and tear gas. And I'd also like to make a side comment that the Eau Claire Justice League is in full support of a mask mandate and of proper health control by the city and by the county to drop the numbers of COVID, which are rising rapidly here in Wisconsin, which is disturbing. I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Seidel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Byrne. I am actually a citizen of the City of Eau Claire, because of Fort Hill, Fonty Street. I wish to go over a public ISP proposal I sent to every single city council member, and I want to thank all the city council members for hearing me out. Two months ago, I submitted to all the city council members a proposal for a public ISP. I believe a public ISP is necessary to address many problems that the city faces now and will face in the future. And I want to go over some of the basic facts that I think the city council needs to consider when it comes to a public ISP. Forty-three percent of the City of Eau Claire's residents live paycheck to paycheck, nearly a third are priced out of internet services by Charter, and most are either forced to use non-broadband ISP like AT&amp;T's ADSL. But a full 21% don't even have access at home to the internet, according to AT&amp;T's report from 2018. So let me be clear here, AT&amp;T charges upwards of $110 per month for 1.5 megabits per second connections via DSL or ADSL. That's $73 per megabit per second, and that is extortion. Charter Spectrum is the only broadband service provider for 99% of the City of Eau Claire AT&amp;T's ADSL. Does not count as broadband under the FCC standards, nor do any of the mobile carriers in our area, merely because none of them provide the consistent rate of about 25 megabits per second. Charter, which is our only broadband service provider in the City of Eau Claire, only just started providing the speed that they advertised after losing two lawsuits against them, one of which was in California for false advertisement. To be clear here, Charter Spectrum has a nationwide class action lawsuit against the company, taxing some 30 million customers for false advertisement and the affiliate provides the product and service that they advertise. And because of this, it is very possible that they will face expenditures by losing this particular lawsuit at nationwide level of over $3 billion, and this would lead to Eau Claire losing its only broadband ISP. Another key fact is 5G technology will be coming to Eau Claire, regardless of who brings it. And as we know from the past, companies like Verizon, when they bring in wireless technology, they overcharge for their services, create tiered services such that to get the full speed of 5G connectivity as dictated by the FCC standards, the end consumer will end up showing out massive amounts of money for the service. The fact is, no mobile carrier in Eau Claire currently provides data speeds over 30 megabits per second. Another key fact is other cities around the US have successfully implemented public ISPs, including Chattanooga and, most recently, West Des Moines. Under Wisconsin law, the City of Eau Claire actually has the right to create a public ISP because we only have one competing company that is a broadband company, and that is Charter Spectrum. This issue isn't just about having a public option for internet services, it's about making sure everybody in the City of Eau Claire has access to the internet at an affordable rate, especially now during a massive pandemic, where we have students living at home, doing homeschooling or tele-schooling. We have people having to use telemedicine because it can't go to the hospital. And the only means of communication really with city council members such as yourself, entertainment, public outreach, and interaction with our government, be it the IRS or other services, is through the internet. As many people have a text on Nextdoor and other forums, Charter even cheated customers with their free three-month service option for parents who go to homeschool or homeschool their kids after we close our schools from 2019 to 2020, the end of the year. People who sign up for this plan only receive monthly bills of $100 or more for that service, and then be told that if they don't pay for this free plan, they will be sent to collection.
Mr. Martin.
The State Public Utilities Commission also stated that Eau Claire would be a profitable program to also help cover the cost of the public ISP option.
Mr. Martin, I am going to mute you.
I want to say quickly here, quick, because I know I'm running out of time. One, as of today, 85% of people I poll across Facebook, including one on Nextdoor, Strathole, and several across Facebook, all agree that we should have a public ISP.
Mr. Martin, if you're listening, again, you exceeded your time, and again, the comments directed towards individuals or businesses and such is not part of the public commentary period. You certainly are welcome to call me anytime if you wish to discuss this further, and my contact information is on the city website. Mr. Didion.
Hi, hey, thank you, everyone, for your time. My name is Brady Didion. I live at 330 McKinley Avenue here in Eau Claire. I'm a family practice physician up in Chippewa Falls. I do newborn to geriatric care, and I'm on hospital care in addiction medicine. I'm here just to talk a bit in support of the mask mandate that was previously mentioned. I guess what I'd first like to do is present briefly two studies recently, and then give perspective on sort of looking backwards and then looking forwards in our community with regards to SARS-CoV-2. So in April, I wanted to study, or mention a study from April in a large healthcare system in Boston to bring some perspective to what the community benefits of a mask mandate in a place like Eau Claire could look like. Upon the initial understanding and subsequent understanding of SARS-CoV-2 in a large Boston healthcare system, 70,000, 75,000 healthcare workers, when mandatory masking was initiated, when asymptomatic spread of SARS-CoV-2 was understood, a significant and progressive decline of new infections over about a full week period amongst those workers in the healthcare system was observed. That has been reasonably extrapolated to entire towns and communities as a evidence-based measure to reduce likelihood of another outbreak or a regional surge in cases. The second study I want to point to, many people probably know about, is essentially detailing a case study supported by contact tracing. Two hairstylists in Missouri, who actually worked over a week at their job while masked as per a mandatory regional masking measure. And via contact tracing, when they were identified as being infected, almost 200 clients were potentially exposed, and none of them came to be positive for SARS-CoV-2. Those clients were also masked. Again, the science, the evidence is there to support community reduction in outbreak potential with mandated masking regionally. What I would do is... What I would do is recognize, from a clinical perspective, that when we see regional mandatory masking, we almost think of that in the same way we would as the concept of herd immunity from a vaccine perspective almost, where not only is one being protected, but they are protecting from asymptomatic spread and from potential community endangerment. Thank God we have not had a deadly nursing home outbreak in the region, and these are the sort of things that mandated masking would be protecting against. We see an economic gain. Recent studies have shown a possible, if we could raise countrywide mask by over 15%, possibly approaching $1 trillion or 5% of GDP could be potentially saved via avoiding another stay-at-home order, which is what we all want. And finally, what I would do, look forward to the impending sort of repopulation of Eau Claire by students, public schools, but definitely university. So important from a city council perspective, from a government or regional government perspective, to work on what I would say, the normalization of masking in a community to make it normal, to make it the expectation. Students will be coming back and they would see, if a mandate were present, this is how we do it here. This is how we protect our community. This is how we care about our community, not only reducing our own risk of illness, but reducing our potential asymptomatic spread. The timing is urgent here, I think, because again, we don't have a lot of time before these things change for the fall.
Mr. Didion, if I could ask you to wrap up your comments, that'd be appreciated.
That's really all I have. I thank you three times.
I do not see any other hands raised for public commentary. So we will close the public commentary period, and again, thank you to everyone joining us this evening remotely and here in chambers, and to our staff, and to my fellow council members. I look forward to seeing you and hearing you tomorrow at 4 o'clock for our legislative session. If there is no objection from council, we are adjourned. Have a great night, everybody. Thank you.
Masks and then, of course, disinfecting and a lot of hand washing. In terms of the activity that has taken place under the emergency order in the past two weeks, we're working on a memorandum of understanding with Catholic Charities and also it will encompass the work with Positive Avenues through Lothran Social Services to move the population that's experiencing homelessness from Hobbs to an alternate location. The plan for that is to have that movement done by August 30th and then we would be building ICE back into the ICE center and that ICE would be available for use as long as it's consistent with the health orders that are in place at that time on September 19th. So, the plan will be to move that population to another temporary location and have ICE available for the ICE center and ICE center users again within the restrictions of the health order by September 19th. Also, in July, on the 15th, the PFC order expired, which required that late fees be waived under our utilities and we are voluntarily extending that through the end of the year. So, the late fees that people would be paying for their utility bills, we're going to be waiving those fees through the end of the year. And then, just in and kind of related, is the drive-through voting. And today was our first day of drive-through voting and we are doing it very, very similarly to how we did in April where people can just drive through. And some exciting numbers. In the entire first week of voting in 2016, we had 135 people exercise their right to vote early. Just today, our first day of drive-through, we beat the entire week in 2016 by having 140 people drive through our drive-through voting. So, apparently, people like the drive-through voting and even though it's a response to COVID and there's been a lot of negative impacts to that, we're certainly seeing that more people are able to exercise their vote safely and are doing so exercising the drive-through voting that we have available to them. In terms of the Economic Recovery Task Force, they have spent a tremendous amount of time and effort in the last few weeks to support the culture of cloth face masks or face coverings and I'm sure, I mean, it has contributed to the work of the entire community that we're seeing in the change of some of our numbers. And they're doing a tremendous amount of work and assistance with business sectors for helping them with their business recovery. In terms of just the overall impact, you know, we continue to support the Public Health Order and the Incident Command Structure that's in place. Just as a reminder, from operational perspective, City Hall is open by appointment with masks to have work or, you know, have service received at City Hall. But we are also trying to do as much work as we can online, you know, with that. Public meetings continue to be remotely and the council chambers, as you can see, is very close to being prepared should that be a decision that we want to have in terms of returning the entire council. We're not quite there yet, but you can see we're very close for those of you that are here. In terms of financial impacts, again, in 2020, I think we're going to be okay. A combination of the relief funding that we're able to have access to and perhaps using a little bit of our fund balance and really, quite frankly, you think of fund balance as a rainy day and an emergency fund. This certainly qualifies for that. We don't think we'll need much of that, but we are able to continue our operations with our personnel and we think we're going to end 2020 okay. 2021 is going to have some different challenges. Interest rates have dropped dramatically and so our interest income on our funds has dropped rather significantly and it's going to impact the amount, because we still are under levy limits and most of the vast majority, actually, about 80% of what we would normally see in our capacity under levy limits for covering new expenses is going to be eaten up or impacted by the loss of interest revenue. So, it's going to be a tight budget year in 2021, but we are actively working on bringing you back a balanced budget. And I would, just as a caveat, note that we do not know what the state is going to do with state aids and, you know, it's going to be very tight, but we will be able to bring you back a balanced budget without significant impact to operations or personnel. But we don't know what might happen with state aids and I just want that little asterisk to that comment because if there is a significant reduction in state aids, that will have an impact in our 2021 budget. In terms of next steps before you later in your agenda today is a resolution that extends the emergency order through August 25th. That will, again, continue to allow you to have your remote meetings. It continues that use of Hobbs as a temporary shelter as we make that final adjustment to move the folks that are experiencing homelessness to another temporary shelter. Of course, it also supports the health order and helps us have a nimble response. We're also doing quite a bit of work on masks. There's been considerable conversation about that and work in the community. We are working with a statewide task force on some local strategies and recommendations for the best approach. And we want that, of course, to be, have health and safety interests for all of our residents and visitors. We want it to meet the necessary legal standards. We want to have maximum public input and legitimacy and we want it to be functionally enforceable. We are working with our county and other partners and it is our preference that we could do something with the county partners, but that is our preference, but that is, of course, not the only exclusive remedy if we're not able to work out something with the county partners. And it is our plan to recommend a process for going forward with masks before your next meeting, which would be the first meeting in August. In terms of next steps, we certainly want to remain flexible and adaptable to the changing conditions and orders, make operational adjustments as need be, continue to support the economic recoveries and continue to support the Health Department's Respond Together Health Plan. And with that, I would take any questions that you might have.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Peters? I know that Ms. Giezzi is on the line as well, if any questions are for her. Council Vice President Emanuel.
Thank you, Council President Wells, and thank you, Mr. Peters, for the update. I always find it helpful and very informative and appreciate also your work and all of the team's work on this. I do have a couple of questions and if it would be allowable by the chair, I would like to, maybe I'll have a question for Mr. Peters first and then, too, if it's allowable, to ask the Public Health Director a couple of questions. Mr. Peters, I understand from the email you sent to council and the presentation today that you're very hopeful that there will be some clear timeframe and guidance around, essentially, a cloth face covering mandate. I don't know what it will come in the form of. You feel very confident that by the August 10th and 11th meeting or before that the city council will be notified of what the plan is, whether it's through the council or through other mechanisms?
Yes, we are working hard to be able to present an approach to how to move forward and recommendations on how to move forward before your next meeting.
Okay, thank you. And then, my next question is for the Public Health Director, if that would be allowable by the chair.
Certainly.
Thank you so much. As the public knows and staff knows and council knows, there's been a considerable amount of conversation, considerable, putting it lightly, around the desire, pro or con, to have a mask mandate. And I have to preface what I'm going to say with my heart and my mind as a policymaker. This is way incredibly heavy on me, hearing and seeing national discussion, statewide discussion and local discussion. This is something that I have lost some sleep over. I have shed some tears as I vacillate around what's my role, what's the right role of supporting the team of professionals who are leading us through this pandemic and doing a wonderful, excellent job and my role as a policymaker. And so, for our Public Health Directors, to me, it seems that a little bit more time is needed and with the public, some members of the public saying, "We have to do this right now." I'm wondering if you can offer your opinion based on the current data, if this will jeopardize, if waiting until perhaps August 10th or 11th or sooner, if that will jeopardize the public safety and/or the effort to follow the spread?
Ms. Giezzi, good afternoon.
This is Felizca and thanks for the opportunity to answer that question, Council Member Emanuel. As Mr. Peters described really well in the data that was presented and all of you are hearing that first, we typically post that on Wednesday morning, we do look at the data every week and take very seriously our obligation to be data-informed and evidence-based as we step through this. It is, as you described, a very difficult situation and very personal for all of us. And I appreciate the challenges that you shared, Council Member Emanuel. I know that is certainly shared by many in our community. I have to follow a very strict code of public health ethics. It's part of our policy as a Health Department and that code of ethics says that if I would be alarmed by the situation in this community related to communicable disease spread, I'd be obligated to tell you to do something now. I am, based on the data and based on the best practices that we have available to us and frankly, based on the behavior in this community that is, like any community, not perfect, but certainly is, as a community, we are leaning in to supporting having a community that can work. And at this point in time, today, I am not coming to you based on my, you know, public health ethic and responsibility to say, "We have to do something now," to say that that is necessary. We have a little time to work through this correctly with the partners in the city and the county and I am confident that we will come to a conclusion that will be supportive of what we need to do in this community. And if it needs to happen sooner than your next council meeting, I will tell you that I will bring that forward to the leadership of the city and county to make it clear that that needs to happen.
I thank you so much for your professional wisdom and just the way that you're leading us with the data and also affirming our community's behavior that's helping to keep the situation at bay. And thank you also for the amount of time you've spent with me over the weekend and this week to help me as a policymaker better understand our dilemma and how we go forward. This isn't a question, if the chair would allow me. I want to just go on record and share in public that I am 100% in support of a mask mandate. And my preference is that it comes countywide because I think it will be, one, more effective for the community to abide by it and understand it and the efficacy rate will be higher because there won't be confusion on which jurisdiction are you in, et cetera. We know based on defiance that this is one of the three key elements of following the spread in the community. And as Wisconsin looks at likely upticks through the remainder of the year, this is going to be a key strategy. And so, I feel it's very important to share that in a public setting and I'm very supportive of that and would encourage my colleagues with the support of the chair, you know, to let our city manager know, whether it's today or via email or phone, your thoughts on this matter so that we can hopefully move forward collectively and unified as not only a city but as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Are there any other questions or Council Member Worthman?
Thank you, Council President Wells. Thank you, City Manager Peters, Health Department Director Giezzi and as well, Council Member Emanuel. I just want to echo that support. I think, looking at what's happening across our state, across our country, the communities that are being proactive with the use of masks, with distancing, with making sure that no large gatherings are taking place and some of these other measures like, you know, outdoor dining and making sure that capacity is at half or below normal, they are able to return to some sense of normalcy because they are taking these proactive measures and that is helping their local economies and that is also helping people keep good health and making sure that we're not overwhelming our healthcare system and ultimately, in some cases, people tragically passing. And so, to me, you know, I really think that our community, while we are looking at how we can be proactive in this, I think, long-term, we're going to have to take that additional step of, you know, mandating a mask order. And so, you know, I look, I'm encouraging our leaders in the health community, but also across the county and city to, you know, to be a part of that and as an elected leader and as someone who feels strongly that, for all the reasons that we've been hearing, I would also like to be and weigh in and support of that.
Thank you, Council Member Worthman. Council Member Christopherson.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Peters, I wonder if you could talk a little bit more about the Hobbs arena. There have been several news emails and I'm wondering if there are ways that we could be in contact more directly with constituents that are concerned about access to Hobbs? How are we communicating with them?
Communicating, well, communicating with constituents that have concerns or with the, you mean, the user groups?
People who...
Of Hobbs?
User groups, yes. People that are expecting to be at Hobbs and wondering why they aren't and that kind of a thing, just to, is there a way that we could communicate directly?
Yeah, that's a really good question. And so, the proposal and the plan, you know, with some, you know, very concrete dates in it came together because, I mean, we had hoped that, you know, that they'd be moved, we would have made the move in July. We're going to reset that plan with some, I think, some better measures that will help that be successful. And that happened, you know, late last week and so, over the weekend, actually, there was quite a few, quite a bit of communication with, I think, many of the people who had concern or had reached out. I don't know if we've communicated that plan directly with the user groups.
Okay.
There are certainly some pathways we can and I will make sure that we do do that.
Thank you, because I would, from the emails, I was reading between the lines of just feeling overlooked or neglected.
Yep.
Like their needs weren't important and, of course, it is very important that their children and their families are able to resume as much normal activity as possible and...
Yeah, we can do some intentional outreach with what the plan is.
Thank you.
The big thing is that, you know, the plan is that there'll be ICE available for users as long as, you know, can be done within the health orders on September 19th.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Thank you.
Are there other questions from Mr. Peters or from Ms. Giezzi from council? I am not seeing any. Mr. Peters and Ms. Giezzi, thank you for all your work and I appreciate all that you continue to do, day in and day out for our community and look forward to what the next step is here by our next meeting and where we take and continue with the work of providing a safe and healthy community.
Thank you, I appreciate that feedback and it is very much a team approach. There's a whole bunch of people that are leaning in to do, to the response every day. So, thank you.
Big thanks to everyone, so, thank you. All right, next on our agenda is the consent agenda and, again, are there any questions from council in regards to the consent agenda or if any council members wish to remove an item for separate consideration? I am not seeing any. So, on a motion by Council Member Anderson and seconded by Council Member Klinkhammer, the consent agenda has been moved, or is moved? Is there any discussion? Council Member Christopherson.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to note, it's so easy to just overlook by the public the information that's in the consent agenda, but there's some very creative programming by our local businesses to return to economic vitality, but I love the creativity of it and I just want to lift up that whole, that we're all in this together and I just thought that was really, really great and wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Member Christopherson. Any other discussion around the consent agenda? Seeing none, City Clerk, please call the roll.
Council Member Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Zhang?
Aye.
And the consent agenda has passed. We do not have any proclamations this afternoon, so we'll proceed with our business agenda, beginning with Agenda Item Number 15, which is a resolution authorizing the acquisition of vacant land known as KSM Farms Number 2579 situated in the town of Wheaton in Chippewa County. Good afternoon, Ms. Basom.
Good afternoon, thank you. Before you, this afternoon is a resolution that would authorize the acquisition of that vacant land in the town of Wheaton, Chippewa County. The Gateway Industrial Park has limited development land remaining. The City of Oakdale has interest in being part of the Chippewa County's new industrial park, which has a requirement of 200 acres. The property would be combined with the remainder of the Gateway Industrial Park to meet that 200-acre requirement. The city has reached out to the owners of the vacant property, which is located on the northwest corner of County Line Road and County Road Key. It's approximately 80.1 acres and is adjacent to the Gateway Industrial Park. Included in the purchase agreement is a lease agreement. The agreement would allow the owners to lease back the farmland until the city is ready to develop the land. This request was reviewed by the Plan Commission at the July 20th meeting and was recommended for approval and with that, I would take any questions.
Are there any questions from council for Ms. Basom? I do not see any. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On a motion then by Council Member Beaton and seconded by Council Member Zhang, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Council Member Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Zhang? Anderson?
And that Agenda Item passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number 16 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with Hy-Vee in order to apply for the idle sites grant with the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation in support of a new project. Good afternoon, Mr. White.
Good afternoon, thank you. The development agreement before you is the last piece that we have to have in place to be able to apply for the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation's idle sites grant. As stated above, it's an assistance program designed to help renovate or revitalize land that's been left idle for a minimum of five years. And the application window will be opening up in mid-August, so we're prepared to move forward, we're looking to move forward with that in partnership with Hy-Vee. Go to the next slide. Just as a reminder, this is the location in place, it's a former Hy-Vee site, or, excuse me, the former Kmart site located at the corner of Claremont and Hastings Way. It has been identified in the comp plan as a location intended for improvement and with a priority on infill development. As you can see in the next slide, the conditions of the building have deteriorated significantly and is a blighted structure with caving in the infrastructure, just unusable for what Hy-Vee looks to do. They also, through a Phase 1 and Phase 2 environmental assessment, have determined that there is asbestos to deal with, lead paint and a number of the mechanicals within the building will all have to be abated before demolition, which all drives up costs of doing this type of a project. If you go to the next slide. What Hy-Vee proposes to replace it with is a $16 billion investment in a new site, 85,000 to 95,000 square feet. This site plan was the one that was dismitted and proved in the city this past summer. It's expected to create over 300 jobs and with the WDC's budget worksheet, they've identified roughly $387,000 of eligible expenses that could be applied through the idle sites grant. It is a pass-through grant, the city will have an agreement with the state and then Hy-Vee will have a separate agreement with the state, which is what is before you today. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. White. Are there any questions from council? Council Member Bergy?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Mr. White. I was just wondering what would happen if the city and then Hy-Vee does not get the grant?
That's a very good question. The state does have a clawback provision, which means if the work is not executed, they do ask for the funds back. Our development agreement takes that into account. It is done as a reimbursement instead of an advance. So, Hy-Vee must complete the work, show us that they've completed the work and then we will send, we will afford them the appropriate amount of funding. In the event that the work does not go through, we have the full amount available to return to the state on their request. So, let's see.
What if they don't get their grant or if they're not awarded?
Oh, pardon. Hy-Vee is still looking at moving forward the project. It does, it will likely change how they fund it and the timeline they do it. With the grant in place, they are hoping they can move forward immediately, but if the grant does not go through, they'll have to reassess how they're looking to put the project together.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? I'm not seeing any. Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you.
On a motion then by Council Member Lor and seconded by Council Member Christopherson, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Council Member Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Zhang?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number 17 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with HK Development LLC for street and utility improvements within the Lorch Avenue development. Good afternoon, Ms. Ness.
Good afternoon. You guys have heard of both of those projects several times. At this time, the KSM within the right-of-voy dedication for the western terminus of Lorch Avenue. It was brought and approved by a city council at their Tuesday meeting in April 14th of 2020. At that time, rezoning was also approved from multifamily residential plan development and community commercial plan development. It was approved for those types of zoning and a condition of that approval is that a development agreement... utilities located within, uh, the project area as shown on your screen. The shaded area indicates the public utilities and the right-of-way that will be affected by the development agreement. Within this, there are no sidewalks being deferred or requested by the developer. Uh, this development includes a 12-foot pathway on the south side of Lorch Avenue and a sidewalk on the north side of Lorch Avenue, and the developer, um, has agreed and has included that in their plans at this time. Otherwise, the development agreement is pretty standard to others that have been presented in the past, and I'd be willing to take any questions.
Does council have any questions for Ms. Ness? I do not see any questions. Thank you. On a motion then by Council Vice President Emanuel and seconded by Councilmember Bergy, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Zhang.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 18 is a resolution approving the final plat for SCS Eau Claire, located west of Kane Road, south of the North Crossing. Good afternoon, Mr. Allen.
Good afternoon, Council President Wald and members of the council. Before you this afternoon is a request from SC Swiderski for their final plat called SCS Eau Claire. Uh, you've seen this, uh, project, uh, back in October of last year, and then, uh, went to the Plan Commission for some additional approvals in January. Uh, they're, they're appro, requesting approval of, uh, kind of the first phase of this residential development, about 28 acres. If we go to the next slide. Thank you. Uh, again, it's related to the next agenda item as well, but you can see here, general layout of the public streets and some private streets as well. Uh, they're looking again about 28 acres, about 152 units, so about the first third of the overall development moving forward with the final plat. So, going through this and the next agenda item would permit them to move forward with, uh, some development permits. So, uh, this was before the Plan Commission last week and is recommended for approval for you today.
Are there any questions for Mr. Allen from council? Mr. Allen, I do not see any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. On a motion then by Councilmember Worthman and seconded by Councilmember Gregert, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Zhang.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 19 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with SC Swiderski LLC for street and utility improvements with the plat of SCS Eau Claire. Again, good afternoon, Ms. Ness.
Good afternoon, thank you. Related to the previous item on the agenda, this is a condition or the, uh, development agreement before you, uh, and the final plat that was just presented has a condition of approval that the development agreement should be completed and executed prior to the signatures being placed on the final plat. Um, the development agreement, again, contains special conditions, uh, referencing financing, construction inspections, and the review fees related to the public infrastructure, and require the financial guarantee of the developer of approximately 1.5 million. Uh, the developer has requested portions of the sidewalk to be deferred for this plat. Uh, as a part of the development agreement, sidewalks are required. Um, there is a written request that's included in your packet, uh, following the development agreement, and, um, there is available amendment language for the revised map that is included as well as a part of your packet. Uh, Sean Bohan with AEC is probably on the line and anticipate in April Paintrow. She is representing the developer if there are specific questions to the sidewalk deferrals. But on your screen right now, you can see that, uh, the required sidewalk would be along Ashton Circle, Christopher Drive, Bedford Street, and County Trunk Highway TT or Kane Road. Um, the deferral that is being requested by the developer would be, uh, the X's, X-out portions on the map as shown now. So, along the western side of Kane Road, uh, the outlot number 1 and, um, number 2, and then the northern portion of Christopher Drive, west of the proposed postal station. And the, the developer and development team did provide some reasons for their request for deferring the sidewalk. That was included in the packet. Um, west side of Kane Road, because there is no other public sidewalk to connect to along Kane Road. Uh, south of the Christopher Drive between Kane Road and Bedford Street, the request for deferral is because the city outlot borders to the south. Pedestrians can use the sidewalk along the north side of Christopher Drive to have access to Kane Road, uh, to and from Kane Road. And then along the west side of Bedford Street between Christopher Drive and the end of Phase 1 for the pavement. Um, they're requesting that deferral because, again, it is next to a city outlot and vacant land borders to the west. Along the north side of Christopher Drive, uh, between the postal building and the intersection with Ashton Circle, they're requesting the deferral because the vacant land borders to the north, and the sidewalk on the south side of Christopher Drive would provide that pedestrian connection. So, as I had mentioned, there is, uh, uh, additional language in your packet for you to reference from amendment, uh, related to those deferrals. And if you have any additional questions related to those deferrals, I believe that the developer and, uh, engineer are on the line as well. With that, I can take any questions.
Are there questions from council? I do not see any questions, Ms. Ness. Thank you. On a motion then by Councilmember Anderson and seconded by Councilmember Klinkhammer, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Gregert.
Oh, thank you, President Wald. I guess I, I can understand, I think, the sidewalk deferrals, other than the one on Christopher Drive. I wonder if that could be explained again? And if the, if the, if I was interested in, you know, making that sidewalk occur, what would the action be? By, I guess, what is the default action right now, um, for this?
City Manager Peters?
What's in front of us? The, uh, resolution is written, uh, with the default that is consistent with your ordinance, uh, which requires that sidewalks will be built unless there's, um, um, accentuating circumstances to, um, and that's not the legal language. Steve could help you with that. But, so, the, 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 you, resolution before you would order the sidewalks to be built. It would take an amendment, uh, to, um, that would have to pass in order for the sidewalks to be deferred.
Thank you, City Manager Peters.
Thank you. I guess, um, is there any, is there a staff recommendation on this?
Uh, Ms. Ness?
I guess, for our recommendation from staff, we'd recommend, uh, you know, the sidewalk be placed everywhere with the exception along County Trunk Highway TT. I do believe that it meets one of the deferral criteria that, um, we anticipate construction of County Trunk Highway TT, Kane Road with, uh, by the county to include sidewalk in the near future. So, that would, uh, meet, uh, condition C, I'd say. There's other physical constraints, um, that would limit sidewalk at that location. Uh, the sidewalk continuity or continuity along the outlet, um, I think that in the future, the sidewalk will be a beneficial link, uh, at the other three locations, and by, uh, deferring it now, it, it just postpones the, the construction of it at this time, and potentially it could be installed at a later date. But with it being, uh, next to the outlet, within the development agreement, uh, it is written that all sidewalks should be placed next to city parcels, uh, prior, or, uh, adjacent to the city parcels. So, I believe that, um, it, it could be deferred, but as our ordinance says, we, it should be installed at this time.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Ness.
That's fine.
Did you have a follow-up, Councilmember Gregert?
Uh, I'll, I'll let others speak for now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Zhang.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I have a question. As far as the deferral goes, what is their plan of when, um, they'll be putting it in? What is the deferral date, or how long are they asking?
Uh, Ms. Ness?
I can speak to that. I did talk to, um, Mr. Nick about that previously, and a deferral right now, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, defer the, at this time, and it can be revisited in the future. Um, a lot of times, what the deferral does is it just creates a sidewalk gap within our system, and then, in the future, this area would be identified as sidewalk gaps within the bicycle and pedestrian plan and recommended for sidewalk inclusion in the future.
Okay. Um, and I just want to voice my opinion as far as, um, I know, they're already doing the construction, and it, it would make sense that these sidewalks are completed now versus later, of having to go through another session just to make another recommendation or ask them to put in a sidewalk. I just want to give my thoughts.
Are there any other questions from council? I am not seeing any other questions. Uh, thank you, Ms. Ness. On a motion then by Councilmember Beaton and seconded by Councilmember, I'm sorry, have I, I've moved it already. Um, so I guess I'll ask if there's any interest in an amendment. Councilmember Gregert.
Uh, thank you, President Wald. I'd like to move to amend, uh, defer sidewalks along Kane Road only and not in the three other locations proposed by the applicant.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second? Councilmember Zhang, did you have?
I'll second.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, a second, in regards to, um, deferring the sidewalk along the west side of Kane Road. Uh, Councilmember Gregert, did you wish to speak to that amendment?
Sure. Um, thank you, President Wald. I feel that, you know, after looking at, um, the more detailed, page 136, um, I can see the need for the sidewalks along the, the city parcels, um, you know, just to create, you know, predictable connectivity for pedestrians so they don't have to, to cross the road unnecessarily, and so that, you know, we can have a seamless sidewalk system as development to, continues to occur, as I think is the plan for, um, the applicant is to keep moving forward on developing this area. Um, so I, I see no reason to wait, um, to include them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion in regards to the amendment, uh, deferring sidewalks on the west side of Kane Road? Uh, so in regards to the amendment, uh, I'm sorry, City Attorney Nick.
Thank you. I get to get my steps in being in the back, but, uh, what we would like to see ideally on amendments is to identify one of the four code rationales for it that you'll see, um, on page 132 of your packet. I think Ms. Ness indicated that our understanding is that the county is planning a reconstruction of Kane Road or County TT, at which time they may put in, uh, what would qualify as an alternative pedestrian facility. So, maybe, you know, they'll put a trail in or something like that. I don't know that we quite know it, uh, exactly, but I think that would be your, I recommend it in your closest rationale in your code for exemption. So, it'd be Sub B, where the owner of the property adjacent to the street selects to provide an alternate, alternate pedestrian facility that's acceptable and approved. Uh, either that, or you always have the, um, the, when it's found, the construction of sidewalk would not serve the public interest, safety, or convenience, which is D. But if the mover and securer could please identify one of those subsections.
Councilman Gregert, are you in agreement with?
Yeah, um, thank you, President Wald. My justification would be item number B, or, uh, letter B, where the owner of the property adjacent to the street elects to provide an alternative pedestrian facility which is acceptable and approved. That would be the county in that case.
Thank you. And Councilmember Zhang, are you in agreement? In the additional language?
Thank you, Council President. Yes, I am in agreement. Um, I think that is probably going to be the best route.
Okay, so, uh, based on the, uh, amendment before us with the additional language, um, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gregert.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Zhang.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Okay. So based on the amendment before us with the additional language, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gregor?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Zhang?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
And that item passes, that amendment passes. Back to the original resolution. Is there any other further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Zhang?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregor?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 20 is a resolution approving the final plat for Woodlands 3, located north of Sundet Road and east of Bean Road. Again, good afternoon, Mr. Allen.
Good afternoon again, Council President Weld, and members of the council. Before you this afternoon is a request for the final plat approval for the Woodlands 3, as noted, located north of Sundet Road and east of Bean Road, for continued single-family home development. As you see in the image before you, you can see aerial photo to the left showing the airing question and how it connects to some existing phases to the east, Phase 1 and 2. And this would be the remainder of that infill for this subdivision. The airing question is just over eight acres in size. It is zoned R1. The applicant, on behalf of the owner, is requesting these 19 single-family lots and one outlot, located as shown here. For some context, this would be the final phase of the three-phase Woodlands subdivision. Phase 1 was for 14 single-family lots. That was approved in 2002. Phase 2 was for 18 single-family lots. That was approved in 2004. This image here shows the, more formally, the lot layout as proposed. Again, Bean Road to the west on the left there, and Sundet to the south on the bottom. If you go one more slide. Thank you. We've rotated everything counterclockwise, just to fit it better on the screen here. So north now is to the left. But then this shows, on the right side, kind of that notched-out portion, would be the one outlot. That's specifically regarding and related to the delineated wetlands on this project. The original preliminary plat indicated the proposed Woodlands Drive, which is the cul-de-sac terminating here at that wetlands area, would connect through to Sundet Road, instead of terminating with the proposed cul-de-sac. Again, connecting through to Sundet would be the preferred design with our city street network. But again, however, wetlands were formally delineated in 2018 along Sundet, which precluded the proposed Woodlands Drive from connecting through to Sundet Road. This change to the cul-de-sac was actually previously approved as part of the Woodlands 2 final plat back in 2004. Again, those wetlands are now identified as Outlet 1. The primary access is to the existing City Line Road to the east. We go back one more slide. Thank you. Actually, we'll do two. One more, please. Thank you. You can see a little bit more clearly there. City Line Road to the east. There would be a secondary access, as you see kind of faded in, to the north. That would be to Woodlands Drive, and from Woodlands Drive, excuse me, the cul-de-sac proposed, connecting to existing 23rd Avenue, actually in the Village of Lake Hallie, which is immediately to the north of this project. This was presented to the Plan Commission at their meeting last week, and is recommended for approval before you this afternoon, along with, in conjunction with the next agenda item regarding the development agreement. I'll stand up for any questions.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, Council President Weld. Mr. Allen, I had the same conundrum at the Plan Commission, but I'm just looking on this picture. If you would just describe, in a situation like this, the aerial view showed that that Lake Hallie portion isn't even developed, and there is, it looks like, sidewalk that's going to be on both sides of Woodland Avenue. How do they actually access that 23rd Avenue going north? Is this something that you make a decision later on when there's access required?
Well, very good question, Councilmember. I know the applicant identified and noted at the Plan Commission meeting last week that, again, through those previous approvals back in 2002, 2004, thank you, there is understanding and agreement to allow the layout, as you see here with the roads, where, again, Lot 12 would be the only one that may be questionable in terms of access. But it's essentially serving as more of a secondary, almost emergency access to 23rd Avenue. So the intent was to really keep traffic running through City Line Road. In fact, that emergency access or secondary access is more of a connection, in essence, for Lot 12. So it almost acts like somewhat of a private road connecting up to that area. So the idea is trying to keep the city streets to the city streets, and the village streets to the village streets, in part because the village street, 23rd Avenue, is, again, showing the aerial photo, you're correct, is still under construction as we speak. And I'm not sure of the current status of those houses, but there are houses actually under construction.
Okay.
So that aerial photo may be a bit outdated, perhaps.
Okay.
And I apologize if we did not include another photo tonight. But again, the Village of Lake Hallie streets are different, Seville Clara streets, in terms of curb and gutter, sidewalk and such. So in so trying to mash those up, there's kind of this small little stub connector, more acting like a private drive for, you know, Lot 12, Lot 11, perhaps. But still connecting back up for emergency access.
So this is what it looks like to be good neighbors?
In a way, yes. So trying not to create a raceway up to and through Village of Lake Hallie, exactly.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Allen.
And try to keep all the traffic through city streets, exactly. Yep.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Allen from council? I do not see any. Thank you very much. On a motion then by Councilmember Lor, and seconded by Councilmember Christopherson, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Zhang?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregor? Klinkhammer?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 21 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with the Healthcare Development and Capital Associates LLC for street and utility improvements within the plat of Woodlands 3. Ms. Ness, are you there?
Yes. Good evening again.
Good evening.
Related to the development that Mr. Allen just presented for the final plat of Woodlands 3, a part of that contains a condition of approval that a development agreement be completed and executed with signatures prior to the final plat being having signatures. The development agreement contains the special conditions, again, referencing the financing, the construction, inspection, and the review fees related to the public infrastructure, and it requires a financial guarantee of just over $368,000 of the developer. The development agreement includes sidewalks based on the city ordinance, but the developer has requested that portions of sidewalks be deferred for the plat. In the shaded areas that you see on your screen, it shows the right-of-way dedication, the easements for utilities, and Outlet 1, which is going to be dedicated to the city for stormwater treatment. There is a shaded area on 20th Avenue for utility connections, and then also utility easement just west of City Line Road. On the next slide, you can see the required sidewalks within the development. There is a sidewalk south of Outlet Number 1 on the north side of 20th Avenue or Sundet Road, along the east side of Bean Road, and then along Woodlands Drive, and also City Line The applicant or the developer is requesting deferral of three sections of sidewalk. The sidewalk that's proposed along Bean Road on the east side, sidewalk that is north of City Line Road, which would be that smaller cross-section leading into the Village of Lake Hallie. So that street section is a little different than the street section on the Woodlands Drive and City Line Road. And then also, they're asking for deferral of the sidewalk along that Outlet Number 1, the north side of Sundet Road. Again, in your packet, there were reasonings provided to us by everyday surveying and engineering, the engineer for this project, for the deferral of the sidewalk at each of these locations. The request for the deferral along the rural cross-section north of City Line Road is due to the Village of Lake Hallie not having sidewalk on either side of their rural cross-section road either. The deferral along Bean Road, Bean Road is also a rural cross-section without sidewalks its entire length, including the existing home in the northeast intersection of Bean Road and Sundet Road. So they're asking that it be deferred until Bean Road is reconstructed to a standard urban cross-section, which would include the curb and gutter and sidewalk at that time. Along Outlet Number 1, or Outlet 1, the deferral which abuts Sundet Road, that again has a rural cross-section without sidewalks. The property that is located in the northwest quadrant of Running Deer Drive and 20th Avenue does have curb and gutter up through that section and sidewalk. And then, the two parcels in between does not have sidewalk at this time, and it is a rural cross-section of Sundet Road at that location. Again, in your packet, was provided amendment to address the deferrals. And if you have any questions related to that, or questions related to the development agreement, I'd be standing for those.
Councilmember Zhang?
Thank you, Council President. You know, I want to ask, are there currently sidewalks put in already in the Woodland Drive besides the deferrals?
Woodland Drive is actually being proposed to be constructed south of City Line Road, so there are no sidewalks. To the north is 23rd, which is within the Village of Lake Hallie, and that is a 22-foot cross-section of a rural roadway with no sidewalks.
Okay. So that neighborhood has, there's a few of them that has existing sidewalks. What is staff's recommendation on this one? I see that it's dotted as required sidewalk.
To the north with the rural cross-section, having sidewalk is a drainage concern on how we would handle drainage if sidewalk were included without that curb and gutter to direct the water. There's potential for pooling issues. So the rural cross-section makes sense to me to not include the sidewalk with the connectivity to the north, to the rural cross-section of the Village of Lake Hallie. Similar on Bean Road, that rural cross-section, that makes sense to me to include that sidewalk when that is reconstructed to an urban cross-section? Does that help?
Yes, that helps.
Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, President Weld. Ms. Ness, the section along 20th Avenue on the outlot, what do you, I know that that section is a rural cross-section as well currently, so does that fall into the same category as those other two, or is that kind of a different case from your perspective?
That's a good question. It is a rural cross-section. If the sidewalk were placed, we do have the wetlands there, and I do believe that there could be some issues with drainage, and that was cited as one of the concerns from the engineer for sidewalk next to that location. Along Sundet Road, we are filling in sidewalk gaps at this time. So we're really, we're leaving this open, but as the roadway is constructed in the future, there would be potential, hopefully, for sidewalk at that location.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Ms. Ness. I am just wondering how, with the parks, the safe routes, the parks that we'll be approving later on in the meeting. And I know that they, Sundet Park is right there, or close nearby, and the park plan calls for sidewalks within a half-mile of parks, including Sundet Park. I know the neighborhood wants sidewalks near the park, and they have talked about that. So how does that fit in with this sidewalk? If the deferral were to go through, would that contradict the park's plan?
That's a good point. I don't know. I have not looked up the street rating on Sundet Road to know what the pavement condition is. Driving through there, it seems like it may be something that would be addressed in the CIP in the near future, but I can't say if it's going to be in the next five years or not. But as you mentioned, too, there are other plans that call for sidewalk within a radius as well of the park. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? I do not see any. I'm sorry. Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, President Weld. Ms. Ness, if we were to defer sidewalks for Bean Road and Woodlands Drive to the north there, what would you say would be the deferral justification on the list of A, B, C, and D?
I guess I would say that it would I guess, I would, I would say that it would be other physical constraints, because it's a rural cross-section at this time, and it would be a drainage constraint potentially. So I would say that I would recommend using the alternative.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Ms. Ness, Daniel Nolton, is he part of this project?
He is, yes.
Okay.
He is the engineer for the project.
Okay. He has his hand up, I don't know. Okay, well, are there any other questions from council, from Ms. Ness? I do not see any. Thank you. On a motion then by Council Vice President Emanuel and seconded by Councilmember Bergy, this item is moved. Councilmember Gregor.
Thank you, President. Well, I'd like to move to defer sidewalks on Bean Road and north of Woodlands Drive as indicated on this map. And for that criteria, for the justification listed as C when determined that the construction of the sidewalk is not feasible or practical due to topography or other physical constraints, essentially because the road would have to be reconstructed to city street standards in order to do proper drainage for them.
We have a motion by, we have a motion by Councilmember Gregor, is there a second? Councilmember Christopherson.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, deferring sidewalks along Bean Road and the end of Woodland Drive in reference to the criteria. C or B?
C.
All right. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Gregor, did you wish to speak to this amendment?
Yeah, thank you, President. Well, I, yeah, I guess, you know, from the perspective of, you know, wanting to make sure drainage is appropriate, and, you know, when we reconstruct those roads, we can put in the sidewalks later, is my understanding. So that would be my reasoning for the one on Bean Road, and then, you know, with the one on Woodland Drive, it goes into an area that would not necessarily have sidewalks either, so that would be my reasoning. Thanks.
Councilmember Christopherson, did you wish to speak to?
Thank you, I don't have any comments to contribute.
Thank you. Councilmember Bergy.
Thank you, Council President. I just, I would be in favor of the referral, deferral on the north of Woodlands Drive, but I, I'm not so sure about Bean Road, just because it looks like it is within a half-mile of, oh, yeah, I would think of Sunbat Park, I mean, it's right there, the park is right there. I mean, it is a, I know that road might be rural, but there's residential around there, and it just seems just contradictory to have a plan that calls for sidewalks within a half-mile of a park, and that's what we want to do as a policy, and then say, no, you don't have to put in sidewalks. So I'm struggling with the deferral on the, on Bean Road. Because, yeah, so that's what I'm mulling over.
Okay. Any other discussion in regards to the amendment for Bean Road and Woodland? Councilmember Gregor.
Yeah, thank you, President. Well, I guess, you know, when, I guess, I have a couple of questions. The, if sidewalk was put in, would curb and gutter like automatically be put in on just one side of the road as part of, you know, responsibly installing sidewalks? Or, and then another part of that question is, I know that there's a power line corridor on that east side of Bean Road, and does that impact the feasibility of a sidewalk without a full reconstruct of the road? Thank you.
Ms. Ness.
I, I have not run into this question before, but I would believe that typically when we do sidewalk and there's drainage issues, we do need to construct the curb and gutter, if that is how we're going to address the drainage. So that would be something that wouldn't just be added to the road, it'd be a reconstruction with curb and gutter, and the associated utilities related to that. Does that answer your question, Ms. Gregor?
Yeah, I guess a follow-up question, Ms. Ness, would be, who pays for that extra expense? Is that, is all on the developer essentially to pay for that, you know, that additional, you know, curb and gutter and drainage and things like that to go along with the sidewalk? And also, I guess, the part of the question about the power lines, is that relevant to this too in terms of feasibility?
The second part of your question, I'll answer that first, yes. That's definitely looking at the feasibility of installing sidewalk in that area, and typically in development agreement, we would look at if there would be cost sharing for utilities or, like in this case, the reconstruction of a road that is next to their development or that sidewalk. That's potential cost shares that we may look at, or that the developer would be responsible. I'd have to go back and look at some other development agreements to see. I don't have the history on that to provide a direct yes or no answer on that.
Any other discussion in regards to the amendment?
Uh.
Councilmember Gregor.
Yeah, thank you, President. Well, I'd like to withdraw my amendment.
So amendment withdrawn, we're back to the original resolution. Councilmember Christopherson.
So Councilmember Gregor, when you withdraw that, are you also going to, you're withdrawing also that northern piece off Woodland?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion in regards to the resolution? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
John. Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregor.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
And that agenda item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 22 is a resolution authorizing the vacation of a portion of Babcock Street from Madison Street to Cameron Street. Does council have any questions for Ms. Ness from last night's presentation? Seeing none, on a motion then by Councilmember Worthman and seconded by Councilmember Gregor, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worthman.
Aye.
Jeong. Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregor.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye. And that agenda item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 23 is a resolution approving the City of Eau Claire Safe Routes to Parks Plan. Does council have any questions from Mr. Ivory from last night's presentation? Seeing none, on a motion then by Councilmember Anderson and seconded by Councilmember Klinkhammer, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Gregor.
Thank you, President Weld, and I want to thank staff and all the volunteers and our partners with the West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission for all the work on this Safe Routes to Parks Plan. Really appreciated the, all the answers to my questions after reviewing it over the weekend, and just a couple ideas for little tweaks to some of the language. I'd like to, I'll be presenting as a, as a motion a little bit. But, yeah, just wanted to give you a heads up, I'll be making a motion a little bit later, but I look forward to a little bit of discussion before then. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregor. Councilmember Bergy.
Just for discussion, I just wanted to just say my thanks as well for staff, and just to make a comment of a lot of the suggestions that are in the plan is what I have heard from neighborhood associations and emails that I've passed along. So it's just really great to see the feedback that I've gotten over the last few years into this plan, which means that this plan is very receptive and took a lot of public input, which I appreciate. So it seems like there's just a lot of work with engagement of the public, and including the comments that I have received and passed along got in, in the plan as well. So I just really appreciate seeing that, and know that the neighborhoods would appreciate, will appreciate this plan as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Bergy. Any other discussion around the Safe Routes to Parks? Councilmember Gregor.
Yeah, thank you, President. Well, I'd like to offer a motion to make three minor amendments to the, to the plan, and I have it prepared as a document in front of me that, and now in front of you, thanks to the work of Mr. Ivory and other city staff to put this together for me based on some minor changes. So just to outline the motion, there's an amendment to page 42 to add Farwell Street and Harding Avenue to the, to the list of streets that should be looked at for pedestrian and bicycle safety improvements for the Demlar Neighborhood Park. And the second amendment would be to add a community garden to the list of amenities at Fairfax Park and Pool. And the third amendment is on page 98, among the list of recommended citywide strategies, to add an additional strategy that is, quote, "Consider the installation of bicycle detection at traffic signals as they are upgraded," and this would be a short-term slash medium-term strategy in terms of timeline.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gregor, and I believe a second by Councilmember Is there any additional comments? Councilmember Gregor, in regards to the amendment?
Sure, yeah. So essentially, you know, looking through the full plan, I, I think it's a really a well-done plan. The maps are amazing, the layout of it, the simplicity. I just saw a few little minor things in there that I, that I would have added if I was, you know, to have filled out the survey, I would have mentioned these things. So just to kind of flesh it out just a tiny bit more, I thought I would propose adding these things to the plan. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregor. Councilmember Worthman?
Yeah, just that, that all three of these seem important, especially Farwell. I get a lot of feedback as the council member for downtown, the safety around Farwell. So I strongly appreciate these amendments coming forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Worthman. Any?
That was a mistake, hand.
Okay, no problem. Is there any other discussion in regards to the amendment? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember.
Come on.
Whoop, I'm sorry. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Council President. I just have a question for the movers. I know there is a community garden, and I'm not sure at Fairfax Park, I'm not sure if it's in the park proper, if it's actually on South Middle School property or not. Did you mean like an additional one, or I just wanted some clarification around that? Thanks.
I'll, I'll answer that. I believe it's part of the park because it's, you know, right next to the ball fields, but I could be mistaken on that. I believe it is, though.
Mr. Ivory?
It is, yeah.
I'm sorry, what?
It is within the park.
Okay. It is. Councilmember Anderson?
Okay, so I guess my question for follow-up would be just, is that an additional, and maybe a misunderstanding of the amendment, are you calling for an additional one or calling for an acknowledgement of the existing one? Thank you.
I think it's just the announcement of the existing community garden that's there now.
Okay, thanks. I was having trouble putting it together in my mind. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Any other discussion in regards to the amendment? Councilmember Klinkhammer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, it would seem to me that item number two on the amendment calls for an additional garden, a garden be added. And I remember the discussion of the garden being in there in Fairfax Park. the garden being in there in Fairfax Park, and the site where the park or the garden is now was approved. I don't, I won't support this if number two is in there because I don't want there to be another garden added to Fairfax Park.
And if I could just clarify, Councilmember Klinkhammer, that I think the amendment is just adding, if you look on page 46 on the left-hand side there, where the key amenities for the park are listed, the community garden was omitted from that list of key amenities. And so what the amendment is, is adding that to the list of amenities that are current and presently there. Does that make sense? We're not, we're not adding the garden. We're not adding another community garden.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Is there any other discussion in regards to the amendments? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Loar?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
And that amendment passes. Back to the original resolution. Is there any further discussion? I would also like to offer my thanks to Mr. Anderson and Mr. Ivory and to all the neighborhood associations and organizations, BPAC and staff that did put a lot of time and work and effort into it. And obviously, over a long period of time, as a parent and a grandparent, I appreciate the extra efforts that are being made to make the access to our parks, which is a big part of our community and our character and our charm. And I think the fact that we're continuing to draw people there and help them get there safely is a great improvement. So thank you for all your work. With that, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Loar?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 23.5, a resolution approving a site plan in a P public district to allow for lighting improvements and the other site improvements to the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire Simpson Field. Does council have any additional questions for Mr. Allen from the presentation last night? Seeing none, on a motion then by Councilmember Beaton and seconded by Councilmember Jean, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Loar?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 24 is a resolution approving the 2021 to 2025 capital improvement plan for the City of Eau Claire. Does council have any questions for Mr. Winsenz from last night's presentation? Seeing none, on a motion then by Councilmember Loar and seconded by Councilmember Kristofferson, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted to share my thanks to our finance director, Mr. Winsenz, and his entire department, who I know worked incredibly hard to bring this plan together. I think this year, it felt a lot different, and in a good way. I received, as a council member, and I'm sure you all have as well, a heightened attention to our capital improvement plan. And, you know, I think just looking at how can we make sure that we are integrating anti-racist lens into our budgeting in Eau Claire, thinking about how do we make our community a better place for absolutely everyone who lives in it. And that was a message I heard loud and clear, both in our listening sessions, in my email, the petition, people getting involved around body cameras, all of the different things helped inform this budget. And it was very powerful, I think. And I also think it's just the beginning of that conversation. I'm just really encouraged to see community members engaging with our budgets in a completely different way. And to me, that's exactly what we need to actually be presenting.
Thank you, Councilmember Worthman. Council Vice President Emanuel?
Thank you so much. And I wanted to just express my appreciation for the sense of engagement by our staff and our community and council on the enforcement planning documents that council will consider for adoption for the 2021 year this fall on the full 2021 budget. I very much appreciate the nimbleness and the creative thinking that our city manager and our chief of police took to move and advance body cameras to the 2021 budget. That is a significant lift of work for items that were slated for several years down the road are now being expedited. I certainly believe we have a lot more work to do, and these are important first steps. I also want to acknowledge some of the advocacy that we've had recently around even creating a new position. And I want to acknowledge that while I think it's a very good idea and one that I am committed to, speaking with some of the stakeholders about a little bit more, I want to acknowledge that moving money from the capital improvement plan isn't mechanically feasible because creating a new position is not an eligible expense, and it's a conversation that we can have more on the operating side of the budget. So I wanted to acknowledge that and share that the feedback has been heard, and it's a very important point and one that is meritorious of additional discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Any other discussion from council? Councilmember Gregert?
Thank you, President Weld. And this is perhaps more of a question, you know, reviewing page 179. You know, I really appreciate the work that was done to, by our finance folks and by our city manager, and who knows how many other people that are to make it work. But this, the body worn cameras topic, you know, moving that to 2021, on page 179, the public safety video system is lifted from the current CIP and revised perspective and showing what other funds had to move around in order to accomplish that. One of the things I noticed is that the total cost, you know, obviously, these were estimates because we maybe didn't go as far down the road in terms of researching the cost before. And I know costs always change, but the total cost went from $475,000 to $525,000. So I was wondering if Mr. Winsenz could speak to that cost difference and how that came about for public safety video systems. By that, in part, I think, you know, moving it to earlier may have, you know, changed the cost because of research and work. But I guess I was wondering a little bit more information about that.
Mr. Winsenz? Good evening.
Yes, thank you, Council President Weld and Councilmember Gregert for the question. You're exactly right in your comments that it was a further refinement of the estimates that had been included in the proposed CIP when that was originally submitted to the city council. So when that project was still a couple of years down the road and planned for 2023, there was an expectation on the part of the police department that those numbers would be further refined. But at the point we made the decision to move that project up in the CIP into 2021, there was a need to further refine those numbers at this point in time and make sure that they were accurate and sufficient funding was included. So that's really the primary change, was just making sure that we had the correct number in the CIP since it was going to be implemented right away rather than a couple years down the road.
Thank you. And if I could have a follow-up question to that?
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Winsenz. The, I guess one of the things that my understanding was is that, you know, looking out a couple of years out, there was an interest in, you know, partnering with the sheriff's department on implementation of body worn cameras. Could you speak to, my understanding is that that's probably not going to happen next year with the county. And obviously, you can't speak for them, but could you maybe explain how that fit into the, how that conversation with the county to be a part of the body worn cameras program, like impacted the budget that we're seeing in front of us?
So yes, thanks for the question, Councilmember Gregert. And it's my understanding that the county has not intended to implement body worn cameras, and that was not included as part of the original project scope that was envisioned out in 2023. We currently partner with the county for our in-squad video system as well as the video system we use in our interview room. So those pieces, that partnership for those pieces was anticipated to continue and was certainly a factor in influencing how we moved forward with the upgrade of those systems. But to my understanding, and again, I haven't had any direct communication with the county regarding body worn cameras, but my understanding that was that the scope of this project never did include the implementation of body worn cameras by the sheriff's office.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Any other discussion in regards to the CIP? Councilmember Kristofferson, I'm sorry, what?
Has this been moved yet? I'm just asking. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, it has been moved, I'm sorry.
I lost my train of thought in the conversation. May I, may I make a comment?
I'm sorry, what?
Mr. President, may I make a comment?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Certainly.
I just find this, this entire budget experience to have been gratifying. Two things that I would point to, one is in the information that Mr. Winsenz prepares for us, I particularly appreciated the longer look, the 10-year overview to see what's coming up because it is substantial and will really impact our community, both in planning but also in the way we enjoy our commercial areas. But when this council was seated and introduced a public discussion period, it signaled a willingness to have participating conversation on really important issues facing our community. And I think that in this particular budget item, this budget session, we saw that coming to the fore in a very meaningful and productive way. Not only did the budget conversation involve things that might have been important to particular areas of our community, but there was a significant number of voices that came forward, participating in what the community finds to be important to them. And I think building the trust of responsiveness means that we have better budget conversations coming forward. I'm very proud of what we have come, come to, what has come to fruition here with this budget that Mr. Peters has proposed as far as amending that proposal. But I just am so proud of the conversation and the way that we are moving into a community and an ethical budget statement that really does express the values of our community. I'm very proud to be supportive of it, and I thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kristofferson. Council Vice President Emanuel, did you have a?
Apologies, I'll lower my hand. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President Weld. I'd just like to echo Councilmember Kristofferson regarding the public listening portions of our meetings, which have been incredibly successful. I find them to be very useful to hear different ideas that we maybe wouldn't have heard because we're sort of opening up that dialogue to things beyond the agenda. I reflected on that last night after hearing all of the different comments that we had. So thank you to you, thank you to Councilmember Bergy, and a few others who really pushed for that listening period. I think one of the things that we should, you know, and I suppose that I have learned and am trying to think of differently in these budgets is, you know, that being anti-racist in how we look at budget isn't just about police. And I think that's a really important thing for us to remember. And something like, for example, the, you know, redoing the berm on Forest Street, where we know that flooding is only continuing to get worse in our community. We know that flooding often, most often impacts communities of color, especially in those lower income neighborhoods or under certain neighborhoods, for example, in the North Riverfront. Those kinds of investments, whether it's for, you know, removal of lead pipes or making sure we, you know, keep flooding from impacting neighborhoods, are the kinds of things that I think we need to continue to advocate for and push for and realize that those are really anti-racist ways of making sure that everyone is positively impacted by our capital improvement budget. So I look forward to continuing those discussions. And really, you know, I echo again, Councilmember Kristofferson, that we're opening up a new culture, I believe, of listening and, you know, sort of moving from our heart about how we can better serve our entire community.
Thank you, Councilmember Worthman. Any other discussion from council in regards to the CIP? Again, thank you to Mr. Winsenz and staff and to Mr. Peters and city staff and to our community, to our council members. It's a big task, a big project, but a lot of good things come from this planning. So it's appreciated. so it's appreciated. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jeong.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number twenty-five is a resolution extending the emergency declaration in the city of Eau Claire. City Manager Peters.
Really nothing to add further than I had at the opening remarks of the meeting, that this is a resolution that would extend the emergency order through August twenty-fifth. It certainly allows the council to continue their remote meetings, allows us to use Hobbs as we finish the transition from using Hobbs for people experiencing homelessness to another temporary shelter. It supports the health order and allows us to have a nimble response as the conditions are changing.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Are there any questions from council in regards to the emergency declaration? I do not see any. On a motion then by Council Vice President Emanuel and seconded by Councilmember Bergy, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? I do not see any. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jeong.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. We have two ordinances for action. Agenda item number twenty-six is an ordinance rezoning property located on the west side of Abcock Street between West Madison Street and Cameron Street from R4 to CBDP and to adopt the general development plan with site plan for the L.A. Phillips Senior Center. Does council have any additional questions for Mr. Allen from the presentation last I do not see any. On a motion then by Councilmember Worthman and seconded by Councilmember Gregert, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jeong.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number twenty-seven is an ordinance rezoning property located at 1,000 West Clermont Avenue from C28 to C3P and to adopt the general development plan with a site plan for a commercial building. Are there any questions from council from Mr. Allen from last night's presentation? Seeing none, on a motion then by Councilmember Anderson and seconded by Councilmember Klinkhammer, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gregert.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman. Jeong.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. We have six ordinances for introduction. Agenda number, item number twenty-eight is an ordinance rezoning a property located to the northwest of Oxford Avenue and Cameron Street to amend the general development plan for Phase Two for an apartment building with a reduced setback for a project known as the current, formerly the Cannery Trail Residence. Agenda item number twenty-nine is an ordinance rezoning property located at 100 North Farwell Street, railroad lot, from P Public to CBDP and to adopt the general development plan with a site plan for a mixed-use building. Agenda item number thirty is an ordinance annexing land to the city of Eau Claire located at 2040 Preston Road, Town of Union, Eau Claire County, as shown on planning drawing number twenty-five A of the shunk annexation. Per Wisconsin statutes, an annexation ordinance requires a two-thirds vote of the elected members of the governing body, therefore eight affirmative votes of the eleven elected council members are required for adoption. Agenda item number thirty-one is an ordinance annexing land to the city of Eau Claire located at Lot One, Block Three of Gulfview Addition, Harless Road, Town of Washington, Eau Claire County, as shown on planning drawing number twenty-six A of the Holsinger Annexation. Per Wisconsin statutes, an annexation ordinance requires a two-thirds vote of the elected members of the governing body, therefore eight affirmative votes of the eleven elected council members are required for adoption. Agenda number thirty-two is a charter ordinance relating to the city council and the reapportionment of the aldermatic districts of the city of Eau Claire. Adoption of the charter ordinance requires a two-thirds vote of the elected members of the governing body, therefore eight affirmative votes are required. And lastly, agenda item number thirty-three is an ordinance amending chapter nine point three eight entitled Smoking and Other Various Ordinances of the City of Eau Claire as it relates to vaping and the use of electronic smoking devices. Does council wish to suspend the rules and take up any of these six ordinances this Not seeing any. That brings us to announcements.
I'd like to.
Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, President Weld. Just in this general atmosphere of community and respect for differing opinions in our... I sit on the Chippewa Valley Innovation Center Board, and I'm on the executive committee as their secretary. And there has come a very interesting, I'm hoping there's nothing inappropriate about sharing the expansion in the industrial park. So, there's an interesting opportunity for the CVIC to propose an expansion for their building and place it in the new industrial park. But as a result of that, it's really motivated a deeper, more enflashed relationship between Eau Claire County and Chippewa County. Chippewa County has a lot of excitement about that and the, the way that that will enable us as the Chippewa Valley to invite industry into our, our region. And I, I just think that energy is exciting, the spontaneous opportunity in which it came forward. I, I just, I just want us all to be watching that because it, it could be a game changer for us, I think. Thank you.
Any other announcements from council? If there's no objection from council, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.